Twelve or twelve oh one, what does it mean? Come over here. You know I will.
Okay, the meeting is in session. And it's second ever roll call.
All right, the meeting of September ninth. Roll call. Counselor Capone.
Yep.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Here.
Counselor DePero.
Here.
Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Counselor Marchese.
You're here.
Counselor Matuski.
Here.
Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Napolitano.
Here.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yeah.
And President Delisola.
Here.
Eleven members present, we do ever quorum.
Please stand, salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to open public participation.
Second.
On the favor.
Aye.
The ayes have it. She's waiting for the clerk.
Counselors, we have one, uh, two speakers for, um, public participation. Uh, Victoria and Paul. And just, um, when you come up, state your name and your address for the record, please, for me.
One sec. Just hit that button on you, sir. Thank you.
My name is Victoria Senickson, and this is my husband, Paul Spring. We live at 193 Nickel Street in Everett. We would like to thank you for the opportunity to come before you and tell how living next to an Airbnb apartment has caused much stress and disruption to our lives. As I said, we reside at 193 Nickel Street with my ninety-six-year-old mother. Paul has lived at this house for approximately fifty years. We share a driveway with 191 Nickel Street, a two-family home that was purchased by the present owner in December of 2018. Since March of this year, 2019, we have experienced disruption to our life from numerous loud parties with twenty to thirty young people, mostly young men, coming in and out of the house at all hours. Some congregating on the front steps, in the backyard slash driveway, at the bottom of the stairs, or on the porch of the top-floor apartment, accompanied by loud music, some smoking joints, drinking beer, cars in and out of the driveway, some parking on our property at all hours of the day and night. One incident had a young man urinating off the top-floor porch onto the driveway. A few weeks ago, another young man passed by my mother's sliding glass door to go beside our garage to presumably release himself, relieve himself, excuse me. My mother witnessed this. We've had beer cans, cigarette butts, vomit left on the driveway. We've been awakened at 2:00 a.m. or have not been able to sleep due to stress and worrying what could happen next. One morning after a party, we witnessed smoke detectors on the railing of the top porch with the compartment doors open where the batteries should be located. This brings up the issue of safety. This is a two-bedroom apartment that is advertised that it will sleep eight adults and an infant in a crib, which they provide. With no one living in this house, we feel that it is a safety issue where the city has no way of monitoring the premises. Since March of 2019, Paul has been talking to City Hall regularly about the issue. Paul brought to the attention of Mike McLaughlin, two men living in the basement that resulted in code enforcement finding an illegal apartment and evicting the two men. They also forced the owner to get permits for all the renovation work being done in the first-floor apartment. Since that happened, the owner refuses to talk to us, and there's no communication. They had previously said that it was their property and they could do whatever they wanted to. With the owner having told Paul he plans on renting the first-floor apartment on Airbnb, we will have the entire two-family house operating Airbnb apartments with no one monitoring what occurs at this house. We want to thank Mike McLaughlin and Dave Rigucci for all their assistance and help during these past stressful months, and we'd like to thank Wayne Matuski for getting it on the agenda this evening. We sincerely hope that the mayor and the entire council will support stricter ordinances on short-term rentals, which could include restricting them to business and commercial districts and not allowing them in residential zones. And when operating in a two-family house, that the owner reside in one of the units full-time, not just a portion of the year. Also, if they are not registered, have strict fines issued every day they operate. We need your help. Thank you for your time and your attention. Did anyone have any questions?
No, we cannot.
Thank you.
We can't, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Would you like to take items two and three first? Do you want to take items two and three first, and then?
Suspend the rules, take items two and three.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose, the ayes have it. Please read two and three on the agenda, please.
Item number two, Mr. President, is an order offered by Counselor Richard J. Delisola Jr. as president, that the Everett City Council hereby approves the appointment of a lateral transfer of Patrick Grip to the City of Everett's Police Department. Item number three is an appointment offered by Counselor Richard J. Delisola Jr. as president, that the Everett City Council hereby approves the appointment of Patrick Grip and Joseph M. Bestery as patrolman in the City of Everett's Police Department. Please note, because Mr. Grip is a lateral transfer, we do have to approve that first, and then we'll move on to the swearing-in part, which is item number three.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Delisola.
Yes.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, have so approved the appointment on item number three, um, counselors.
Fiable action on item number three.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
This is to appoint both officers to the Everett Police Department. Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Delisola.
Yes.
Eleven ayes, zero nays. Congratulations, gentlemen. I'm going to come on the other side of the screen here, and then, uh, sign this. Set this up as best I can. I, to solemnly swear, that I'll faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as a police officer for the City of Everett according to the best of my abilities and understanding agreeably to the rules, regulations, laws, ordinances, and charter of the City of Everett, so help me God. I, do solemnly swear that I'll bear true faith and allegiance to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and I'll support the Constitution of the Commonwealth, so help me God. I, do solemnly swear that I'll bear true faith and allegiance to the United States of America, and I'll support the Constitution of the United States, so help me God. Congratulations, officer.
We'll do a quick five-minute recess, and a film has come up and takes some pictures. Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could we suspend the rules, take item number twenty?
Uh, Mr. President, uh, not to belabor that one, but we do have people here that were hearing item fifty-five. I'd like to just get that over with. They've spoke on public participation. Item fifty-five.
Just, uh, just so you know, the reason he asked for that one is because they were at a committee meeting right before, and the following piece will be for the couple.
All right, we'll do that one after.
If that's okay. I think Mr. Freezer's waiting.
So the motion, the floor was number twenty, take number twenty?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose, the ayes have it. Please read number twenty on the agenda, please.
Item number twenty is a petition offered by, uh, this is, I'm sorry, a Committee on Community and Business Development report, a petition offered by Counselor Richard J. Delisola Jr. as president, that the Everett City Council hereby approves the Psychic Fortune Teller license, it is a new, for Psychic Boutique at 1936 Revere Beach Parkway.
Send the committee report, fiable action.
Second.
On the motion, Counselor Florio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to explain to the board that this is actually, uh, it's really not a renewal, it's because an extra person is coming on, and the way our ordinance is written, it's written on the individual. So, um, so that's what we discussed in committee, and both, uh, her sister's coming on to also do fortune telling, and both parties are here. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Matuski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to, uh, I wasn't at the, I'm not on that committee that previously met, but there has been no issues with this property or this, this business since they opened, uh, six or seven years ago. And I also, I know they're represented by one of the leading attorneys in this community, and I want to offer my condolences, Mr. President, to, uh, Mr. Alfareese, Attorney Alfareese, on the passing of his beautiful mother. Thank you.
Thank you. No more speakers? Fiable action, I need a roll call vote, please.
Okay, thank you. I just want to double-check.
Yep.
All right, roll call, vote, fiable action. Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
No.
Um, Counselor Marchese. Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Okay, and President Delisola.
Yes.
Ten ayes, one nay, you have so passed the petition. Please note that, um, Wednesday at twelve or later, you can come and pick up your license from me, from my office. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Suspend the rules, take item number fifty-five.
What number is that? What number?
Thank you.
We'll have a second on, taking fifty-five. Thank you. All in favor? I'll oppose, the ayes have it. Please read fifty-five on the agenda.
Item number fifty-five is on the new business resolution, uh, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor Wayne A. Matuski, that code enforcement check out the property at 191 Nickel Street for possible overcrowding at request of neighbors in that area.
Counselor Matuski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to add Counselor McLaughlin, because he's been involved in this case, so I'd like to make that as a motion to add Counselor to this piece.
Second motion.
Uh, Mr. President, as you heard, these people that live, uh, life fifty years on Nickel Street have had to deal with some nasty neighbors. Uh, this is what absentee landlords are going to take advantage of, this bed and breakfast type of thing. It's an animal house, it's like National Lampoon over there, as you heard, and, uh, I did speak to the building inspector briefly, Director Soper, and he's aware of it. They're going to, uh, put a full court press on that property and notify the landlord that it's unacceptable. You're going to see some results very quickly, and I'd like to refer this to Mr. Soper in the Building Department.
Second motion.
On the motion, uh, Counselor McLaughlin to speak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I echo the comments of Counselor Matuski. I got aware of this over the course of the summer, and immediately talked to code enforcement and Jim Soper and got them down there, and they did find an illegal, uh, unit in the basement, and they were able to break that up, but I think there's still lingering, uh, issues, as Counselor Matuski just alluded to. Uh, these neighbors have put up with enough, and it's time to get some resolution for these individuals, and also to try to curb this issue from happening across the City of Everett, because this is a great way to operate a business. If you own a house, it's a great secondary business to have. If we don't smart, become smart on this issue and put some regulations in place, we could have these popping up all over the City of Everett and really cause a major issue for our community. Not that they're a bad thing, but they need to be run properly, and they need to be guided, and they need to have restrictions on them. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Florio.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Up until a couple of months ago, everybody knows here that we didn't even have an ordinance in place. So, we put the ordinance in place, and it needs to be tweaked. You absolutely have to live in the property, and I believe the city clerk is already working on that. So, uh, thank you for, uh, working hard on, uh, a problem that we have heard tonight, but it's something new for us, so we are, we're always going to have to tweak things, and it's the unfortunate situation that these poor people have to go through what they did. But we are working on it, so I don't want them to think that we're just sitting here doing nothing, and, uh, we will get it done. Thank you.
Correct. Counselor Napolitano.
Thank you. Yeah, I might want to direct the clerk to look into Malden. My sister came out this summer, she originally, originally was going to be renting a B and B in Malden. Malden has shut a lot of these down. They've created new ordinances, um, they've provided zoning. Uh, most of these, most of these that were listed back in June are now closed at, as of the end of July, beginning of August. So, I mean, rather than recreate the way, we might want to take a look and see what they're doing, what they put in place, see what, it's there that can be emulated, because, uh, this is something that could be very grossly out of control, and we definitely do need to have some type of guidelines in place to restrict these. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, second, um, you vote back in two weeks? Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose, the ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, on the mo- Can we, uh, take, suspend the rules, take item number fifty-four, where we're on this topic, it's actually the same, uh, item.
Seconded to take fifty-four, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose, the ayes have it.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we amend this by adding Counselor Matuski on to item number fifty-four as well, seeing that he is working with these individuals as well on the same topic. Make that as a motion.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose, the ayes have it.
So, Mr. President, this, uh, is also in relations to, uh, Airbnbs and short-term rentals, and, uh, I know other, Counselor Napolitano just alluded to, but some other communities in Revere and other communities have been successful at, um, cracking down on Airbnbs and being able to get a hold on, a hold of their Airbnbs and short-term rentals. So, um, I know, um, City Clerk Cornelio and Assistant City Clerk Rigucci have been working on this for months, and they've done a really good job, but I think that, uh, one point that needs to be made, Counselor Florio made it tonight, is homeowner needs to live in the property. Then they are going to be invested in what's going on. If they're going home to Wakefield, Winchester, wherever they're going home, they don't really care about 199, 191 Nickel Street or any other property in the City of Everett, because they're going home to their nice community at nighttime, and they're not being disturbed like these individuals and several others across the city. So that's really something that I hope, and I think, uh, our clerk is already working on it and doing a really good job at it, but I think it's something that we need to bring back to the table, look at how we tweak this so that we can get this under control and get some resolution through the residents, and I think probably all of my colleagues feel the same, and it probably hurt from residents across the city on this issue, so, uh, you have the floor, my colleagues.
Uh, Counselor Marchese.
Uh, on the Airbnb thing, uh, the rentals, I have a cottage, I use, I do it, uh, you know, it's a cottage, isolated from people, but it's a difference, it's a summer rental, you know, it's totally different. it's totally different now that we're right on top of each other in the city of Everett, and things like this could happen, 191, 93. If we do pass this, will this say affect a short-term rental, the difference between an Airbnb? Like, what's a three-month, four-month? Would that be, that'll be something different?
Do you want me to add to that?
Yes.
Yeah. So no, Airbnb is just a business term. That's the name of the company. There's a few different business companies, a few names. Short-term rental is what they're actually called. The current ordinance does state that they're, they have to live in the ordinance, and I think I've mentioned this to our, the neighbors on Nickel Street.
No matter what the length of time is?
No, no, it does not matter. There are, they're called shared units, not shared units. There are three different versions. We did mimic some of Boston and some of, who have some of the strictest units. This problem, this property itself, is just not abiding by any regulations, and no matter what I've sent, don't, they're just, they don't care. So I've involved the Building Department and the Police Department, because my letters have not, I mean, I've worked with them for a few months. I just want you to know that my office has taken it very seriously. It's just, they're not listening to me. So I had to go above to people that have more authority than me, that can actually shut them down and, or have them listen. So I have been working with them. The ordinance does state this, and there will be a more, it's actually going to be an abbreviated ordinance, but it will be more strict. It will, it will also go into zoning. So I've had meetings-
And you will have to live in the building.
-for three months now with the Building Department. I've brought in planning. We've all worked collaboratively. So we're almost at the end now. We have a couple of weeks left on this new ordinance, and obviously it's going to come right to you guys, and you can send it to committee and go delve into it more. But we are taking it very seriously. We don't like the way some of them are operating. They're not registering with me. I have had zero. I've sent out myself and clerk, Assistant Clerk Rigucci have sent out probably 60 letters to, no one's responding to us. So what we've done is just sent out to Building Department, because that's it. That's the way we're going to do it. They don't want to listen. I mean, I'm very fear, if you know me.
But then, ladies and-
I've given everybody ample time, but no one's listening.
Not to go on, no, but just, you want to know that, you know, we appreciate the work you're doing, and like, I support 100 percent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel, Counsel, Counsel McKinnon, and then Counsel Simonelli.
I just said, a quick question to you, Mr. Clerk. In that ordinance, and I know that we had put something on before, it's in the works. I know that you were working on it for a while, since May, I think, now.
May, yeah.
In that ordinance, does, if there's a response to, for fire to respond to the property, do we know about that? Or if there's a response for police to-
Well, we do classify, so any, anyone that gets a license, if they, if they become a problem property, they lose their license.
Okay. Do we also, maybe we should make, make any response to the property now, since they're not abiding, and put this in ordinance form?
Yeah, so what we can do is very similarly-
That they would actually be charged for any response?
Lodging, you get those reports every quarter that I get. So I can do the same, but the only problem is I don't know them all. That's the difference. Lodging houses register with me. I know they exist.
Airbnb is going to be registered now with you, right?
Yeah, but I have zero.
Okay. So now, so now, I mean, I want to add something and give you an idea.
Yeah.
And what that would be is just, I would like to see, any responses from fire, any responses from EMTs, 911, anyone.
I can do that.
Police, they be charged. And if they're not charged, the homeowner be charged, or the Airbnb license will be charged for it. So once you start hitting them in the park book, they're going to say, wait a minute here. You know what I mean? They're not going to want to hear that. So.
When we sit down next week, I'll mention that to the, to the group, to see how we can add something like that.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Counsel.
Counsel Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you for Counsel Simonelli. If I may ask the clerk a question, are there other examples in the city of Everett as the one that's happening on Nickel Street?
Is there problem properties like that? You mean?
Yes.
There's only actually been one or two more complaints, and it wasn't as egregious. I'll be honest, I haven't had a ton of them. I feel very bad for the gentleman. He's had the worst time with this. But we have had a couple.
One's more than enough, but if it was multiplied, then what's coming back to us in two weeks should become-
Knock on wood, it hasn't been bad, except for his experience and one or two others.
Thank you. Counsel Capone.
I'm going to make a motion to refer it to Legislative Affairs.
Excuse me.
Through you, Chuck, I was just going to ask.
Counsel Capone has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just going to say that we should refer it to Legislative Affairs. We can work with you folks and move up from there.
And I'll send the piece. Absolutely.
Then we don't have to have it come back up to the body, and then go back in.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Can we, can we suspend the rule and take item number 29?
Second motion.
Second to take 29. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. When you're ready, read 29 on the agenda.
Yes, Mr. President. Item number 29, on the unfinished business, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel John Leo McKinnon, that the city consider going to a citywide 24/7 residential parking, adding the weekend to the current wording of the ordinance. This would hopefully stop the parking that will be introduced into the city due to the overflow from visitors from the casino.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yeah, Mr. President. What I'm going to do with this is refer it back to sponsor, but I want to make a comment. At the last meeting that I seen with this piece on it, there was a number of debating going on through my colleagues. I thought it was going to go into committee, but it didn't end up that way. It got put back here. But there was a lot of comment made. So I'm just going to refer this back to sponsor, and if any type situation like this should happen again, I would definitely ask that they put something like this back in order. Because I don't, I don't want to actually make, you know, no, it didn't go to committee. It was kept in place to come back here. So I was here because I was here. So what I'll do is I'm just going to refer it back to sponsor, because there was so much negativity of it. So I don't want to, you know, get involved with the city councils, you know, part of that. So what I'll do is just refer it back to sponsor.
Second motion.
On the motion, Counsel Marchesi.
This piece here, 24/7, I don't know how drastic I would go there, but it definitely needs work.
Tweaking.
You have people here coming in, getting like $10 for permit for a week, getting an Uber, and going to Florida, coming back and just parking here. It's ridiculous. I have cars on my street that have been here for months, just keep re-upping, re-upping. How many times can you re-up until you're a permanent resident? I said, something we got to look at. I mean, I see, I mean, we took care of down in Ward 1 and 6 where you can't park there. I mean, I'm on Elsie Street, I got a parking lot there. There was never anybody on that street before, and it's all blue, 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 not registered, university of mass, university of whatever, as I'm saying. Are you kidding me? So first of all, those parking permits should probably go up from $10 to like $50 a week, and they're $200 a month. If they're going to use our streets, let's make some money from them. Don't let them just, you know, make an inconvenience for the residents that do live here. So I think there's, I don't know if it's a, it's a different piece, or we can work on this piece here, that Counsel McKinnon did, instead of just referring back to sponsor. Maybe refer this thing out. Let's work on this piece. What we definitely need-
We have a vote on it. Well, I can do what I want with it still. So I could put it into committee.
Right. So that's just, just my, my take on it. It does need work.
Okay.
Thank you.
For Counsel McKinnon wants to speak again. Anybody want to speak on this piece for the first time? If not, Counsel McKinnon has the floor.
Thank you. I was going to refer it back to sponsor, because there was like a lot of negative comment the last meeting on it, and nobody wanted it. But now, I think if it actually went into committee format when it was supposed to, we could have actually done what my colleague is saying now. So we could have worked on it, tweaked it, got it to where we want it to be, and then we can actually do it. We have time to do it. So I'm going to refrain from sending, referring it back to sponsor and put it into government operations, and actually, well, we could put it in Legislative Affairs. That would be better. So I'd like to put it in Legislative Affairs, so we can work on this.
We have a second on that?
No, legislative.
Seconded.
It's going to go in ordinance.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Can we suspend the rules and take item number 32, please?
Second.
Got a second to take number 32. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Please read new business number 32.
Item number 32, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel John Leo McKinnon, that the police chief and fire chief appear at the next meeting to give an update on any related issues regarding the casino and the area around it in regards to public safety.
Counsel McKinnon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I spoke to both chiefs, and I wanted to see if I can get them to come to next meeting to actually bring us up to power on what's been happening in the area of Ward 1 down the street and also the casino, bring us up to speed on anything that's been going on, and also have the council notified, just like we do with a, almost like the reports of the housing units that we have, if we could have a report back from them. I spoke to the chief tonight. I told him they have till next meeting, so if they could both come back and just actually say what they want to do with this. That would be great.
Okay.
Do you look at a postponement?
Yeah, I want to postpone it to the next meeting.
Next meeting?
Yes. With a response back from them, if they could, either in writing or up here.
Or in person.
Yes.
Second motion.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, for next meeting? Go back to regular business. Yes. Give me number one on the agenda, please.
Item number one is an order offered by Counsel Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president, that the Everett City Council hereby approves the promotions of Private Richard Collins to lieutenant and Lieutenant Jay Lewis to captain in the Everett Fire Department.
Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move we postpone it to our next meeting.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, for next meeting?
Mr. President?
Counsel Capone.
Suspend the rules, take items four, five, six, 11, 12, and 13 collectively?
Four, five, six, eleven.
13.
Eleven.
12 and 13.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Please read the first item.
Item number four is a donation to, that the Everett City Council hereby accepts a donation of $50 from Donna Scott to be donated into the Palin Memorial Library gift account. Item number five is a donation that the Everett City Council hereby accepts a donation from the following companies who place in the city of Everett's celebration account to help support Village Fest. The Brewster Company, $400. Beer Moose Brewing Company, $1,000. Olivera's Enterprises, $500. Century Bank, $1,000. Pioneer Owner LLC, $1,000. Snitzer Steel Industries, $1,000. Paul W. Marks Company, $1,000. State Line Graphics, $250. Boneup Brewing, $500. Teddy Peanut Butter, $1,000. Item number six is in order to accept the following donations to be deposited into the celebration account to support Village Fest Union Bank, $500. Capital Waste, $2,500. Item number 11, that the Everett City Council hereby accepts a donation from Snitzer Steel Industries for $500 to be deposited into the city of Everett's celebration account to help support the 4th of July event. Item 12 is a donation that the Everett City Council hereby accepts the donation of $40 from David Starwell for the city of Everett's Department of Veteran Services to be deposited into the Veterans Services Account. And the last item, 13, that the Everett City Council hereby accepts the donation of 1,000 from Delta Dental of Massachusetts to the city of Everett's celebration account to support Village Fest.
Second, roll call vote.
We're going to vote on them separately, just so you know. So item number four, Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePero?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Marchesi?
Yes.
Counsel Matusky?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Delasola?
Yes.
11 yeas, 0 nasia, pass the order. Item five, Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePero?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Marchesi?
Yes.
Counsel Matusky?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
President Delasola?
Yes.
11 yeas, 0 nasia, pass that order. Item number six, Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePero?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Marchesi?
Yes.
Counsel Matusky? Counsel Matusky, thank you. Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
President Delasola?
Yes.
11 yeas, 0 nasia, pass that order. Item number 11, Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePero?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Marchesi?
Yes.
Counsel Matusky?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Delasola?
Yes.
11 yeas, 0 nasia, pass that order. Item number 12, Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePero?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Marchesi?
Yes.
Counsel Matusky?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Delasola?
Yes.
11 yeas, 0 nasia, pass that order. And item number 13, Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePero?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Marchesi?
Yes.
Counsel Matusky?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Delasola?
Yes.
That'd be 11 yeas, 0 nasia, pass all six orders for donations. Item number 25, I think we have to take off the agenda.
Item 7, 8, 9, and 10 collectively.
Can we take 25 since Mr. Gaff is here?
Oh, I asked why he was here, and he didn't answer me.
Thank you very much.
Motion to take 25?
So moved.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Please read 25 on the agenda.
Mr. President, item number 25 is a resolution offered by Counsel Michael J. McGlaughlin, that the administration give an immediate response to the idea of a 24-hour parking sticker enforcement for Ward 1 and Ward 6 due to the casino patrons possibly taking up residential parking spots in these specific wards.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Can we invite up Sergeant Gaff from the traffic, please?
Second.
Second, all in favor? The ayes have it?
Yeah, he's coming out, I think.
Counsel McGlaughlin. Council McGlaughlin?
Sergeant, good evening. Thank you for appearing.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Donald. Thank you also for appearing this evening. Sergeant, if you want, I think you might have some notes or some information you'd like to share with us, but I just wanted to see what you have seen and thought since the resort has opened in June and some of your thoughts going forward.
Well, I think, I think it's been better than anybody anticipated with the parking, with the traffic. I think it's still, some areas still working out. We do have some numbers. There were only, we had two hundred and thirteen shifts done for coverage and we averaged five parking tickets down there for the Lower Broadway Zone. I think the publicity and the word getting out by the city, by on court to take public transportation really worked. We haven't been getting many complaints. The businesses down there are very, very happy with the way the sticker program, with the visitors passes that we handed out, worked. We're still tweaking a couple of things. There's a couple of places down there that we need to keep working with and we're tweaking a couple of things, but I think overall, I think it went much better than anticipated. And, you know, Friday and Saturday nights are Friday night, Saturday nights, no matter where you go, traffic's traffic and people trying to come home during, you know, summer hours, but so far, the holidays, everything's been great. The parking lot across the street has only been full a couple of times on both sides, so we adjust to that when we need to. And I think the guys, guy, the officers down at the station have done a tremendous job out front directing the traffic, working with the lights, getting people through. You know, we're working with the ride share programs, try to get that cleaned up a little bit, but I think the PEOs have been a great, great asset to us down there right now and their, their presence down there with, with their cars have really helped us. So we are very pleased, I believe, with what is going on down there. We do have some, you know, hard numbers on it, but you can look at numbers and look at numbers. We gave out two hundred and eighty, excuse me, one second. Since the program started back on June twenty-second, we gave out two hundred and eighty Everett resident stickers out Lower Broadway that came up, we publicized. Then we gave out two hundred and ninety-seven visitors passes and you probably say, whoa, that's a big number. Two hundred and eighty passes that we gave out the black stickers for Lower Broadway. Every visitor that changed in the blue one to the black one got a visitor's pass to see how that goes. We didn't want to publish, you know, we didn't want to, so actually technically if you look at it, only seventeen people came up and got a visitor's pass. And those are some people that didn't drive, don't have a car, that need their, you know, brother, sister, daughters to come pick them up for rides. So only gave out seventeen visitor's passes above what the residents asked. Myself, Jay Monte, we walked many, many nights down there and days to work with the businesses. We gave out thirty-one business plackets with time restrictions on them and we haven't had any issues with that. The temple down there, they have their own little sticker because they have certain needs for, for their religious meetings and their services. And he calls me and we let the PEOs know and, and everything's been working well down there. So that's been going good on Thornbyke Street. Out of those thirty-one business plackets, seven have been returned. One business moved due to the fact they needed a bigger warehouse. Their business has taken off so big. And then, you know, one issue that we really were concerned of is to see how it was going to play out is the one day passes. So we gave out sixty-four one day passes, Everett, you know, special events, that if someone at their family was having a cookout, a birthday party, all they had to do was come up to City Hall, get a one day pass and they just put it on. And we haven't had any complaints about that. So the residents have been coming up, getting the one day pass and it's good for that one day for their parties down there and then the PEOs know the certain colors of the plackets that are down there and the PEOs have done a great job and I think everybody that, everybody that's put their time and energy down there is, is reaping some of the rewards with some of the parking issues. Not saying it's all one hundred percent. We've got a couple of things we've got to clear up. LaFonza, the Bowery Beecham Street, we've got to help him out. Yep, we've got to help him out and that's something that we're working on with him on and I think we have something worked out where we can help him out with two hour parking during so many hours on Beecham, on Beecham Street because we made Beecham Street no parking totally because of the truck route and all that that the, that was put in, but I think we can accommodate him and we've been on the phone with him for a little bit now and I'm hoping to have that in place for him by the weekend. But everybody else, I make sure I drive down there, everybody sees me down Lower Broadway, the PEOs are down there and I just, I don't think we're getting too many complaints.
Thank you. Council McGlaughlin?
Mr. President, thank you. First Sergeant, I agree. Thank you for your hard work and due diligence on Lower Broadway. I think it has worked out well and I think there has been a very small amount of inconvenience or interruptions to the lives down there. Beyond the rotary though is where they're, they're failing to squeeze, whether it's Main Street, Village, even in my own neighborhood, Baldwin, I have that neighborhood, we're starting to see a trickling effect of cars that are trickling into those side streets, especially down Prescott Street and Everett Street and those streets. They're parking there and they're walking down again and going onto the bus. And I'm sure some of that foot traffic will end as the winter months come in because you're not going to be as willing and friendly to walk over Air Force Road and through the bike path to get onto the shuttle at, you know, River Green Drive. So I'm sure some of that will, will work itself out, but there is definitely an increase in parking on those streets associated and related to the bus share, bus stop, I guess you call it the bus stop down on River Green Drive. So that's definitely seeing an increase in vehicles in that neighborhood. And you and I have talked about this Sergeant, I know that they do a good job, the traffic department to try to move those cars along, but that was sort of my concern was, Lower Broadway was heavily monitored and heavily thought about. And then what happens after that area, the second level of zoning, if you will, from Lower Broadway beyond, and you are starting to see that crunch in the Village section of the city and because they're coming down Air Force Road from the Village streets or they're coming in off of the streets off of Main Street and they're kind of using that as a little point to that bus stop down on Air Force Road, River Green Drive.
We're getting back to our conversations and I think the one approach that we did take, that we asked for was a little patience and let's see how the first three months went and I think that's where we're at now. I think it's time to go back with Jay Monte and the planning and back to the parking experts to see and pull out all the numbers to see if there's a higher rate of parking tickets down that area. We know there's one area down there, River Green, the circle, we're going to put some signs up, no parking, that's going to take care of that. You know, we're seeing a bigger influx of people with the Pioneer School down there too.
Yeah, absolutely right.
So that's something that was addressed last time at the meeting and that's been better, but I think that traffic has something to do with the.
That has been just recent, in the last like week or ten days with the school, I don't know. School's only been open for a few, few weeks.
Few weeks. So, I mean, that's a little more traffic and we expected that.
Yeah.
And that's why we want to see this next level of, we were lucky it was the summertime, now we want to see the next influx of how many people. We had the school opening, the industry down there, all the breweries and the restaurants down there, that's, you know, they're doing a nice job and I really hate to see the, punish those businesses and that's something that I think, I think something we really have to look at and we've had the discussion myself and Mr. Donald lately and the chief. I know the chief's dead against twenty-four seven through the city just because of the work, not so much the work, we're not afraid of work, just the overseeing it, it would be a lot. But the thing is, we got to see where we can make more parking spaces and not taking them out to help these businesses. I mean, there's spots on Main Street where we've talked about, there's hydrants and there's bus stops that are within thirty feet of each other. You know, we've talked about putting them together. Now we're opening up more space, you know, there's, there's four or five that we've already targeted and we're going to try to go forward, that's going to open up thirty spots, maybe fifteen, twenty spots on a Main Street to help these businesses. I just think we have to look, before we crunch these businesses in the city and the residents, to look to see if we can increase in parking for these businesses because they've been hammered a little bit with the construction, you know, I just think we have to help the, some of the local businesses out. And getting back to the other piece, I talked to the chief a little bit regarding the, the plackets. I mean, yes, twenty-four seven, there's some things that I think if a committee can get together and look at some other items that we can address that. I think that might address the whole area down there, whether, if you do it on the weekend and you just put a time limit or something on that, or take a look at how long you can use those plackets, you know, maybe go to a color packet that it's good for, you know, this week of this month or something like that. I think there's some great ideas that we can come up with to do it, but to, to go to twenty-four seven, it's, it's, it's hard on the residents, you know, all of a sudden if you have a party or you have people over and you got two or three people and you need to get a one day pass and it's the weekend, you didn't get it, you know, we'd help them out at parking the best we can, but that's an extra burden that, on the taxpayers, I don't think we need to do right now, but I think we have the, keep an eye on the increase in tickets that we're seeing down there. We're not seeing a great amount of tickets extra down there right now that I know of and we can take a look at that.
Yeah, also another big piece of that is like home healthcare and things of that nature that we have to really be conscious of. And sometimes it's not even professional home healthcare, but it's an elderly parent that's been in that house their whole life or raised their family there, they're there alone now and don't want to leave, but one of the siblings has, you know, has to come down at least on a daily basis and check in and things of that, of that nature through we have to bear in mind of those circumstances as well.
And I agree, Mr. Donald, and I think that's one of the other concerns is like sixty-six Main Street, for example. Cars parking on that strip of Main Street in front of, from West Street around the bend. Home health aides use those parking spots throughout the day mostly, you know, not so much at nighttime, but throughout the day to go in and service residents and that, and I'm just using that as one example, right? So those spots are filled up some days and not, not consistently. This hasn't been like an overwhelm and it's been really successful, I got to be honest with you, but it has happened and it has become an interruption to the quality of servicing those residents at sixty-six Main Street. And there's other things and I understand not wanting to squeeze businesses and crunch businesses, but you also need, not you guys, but the city needs to provide a quality of life for our residents who expect to be able to come home and park in their neighborhood or be able to get, you know, a child to see their elderly parent or get to sixty-six Main Street for a health aid service call or whatever the case might be. So I, I think that if we continue to work on this, I think that it has worked. Lower Broadway is a perfect example, that twenty-four hour can work, that it has worked down that area, that that has been transformed into a great program down there and I think that that could be a base to start looking at it citywide in the future. It's not going to happen tomorrow, it's not going to happen in a month from now, but I think if we use that as the base, I think it has been successful. And I think if we were to go section by section and not overwhelm the whole city, I think we could make this a real successful story of how we introduce this resort into our community. So I, I thank you guys for Lower Broadway because I was wrong. I thought it was going to be chaotic down there and it wasn't and it worked out well because of your diligence of your efforts. So thank you.
No, I appreciate that and I appreciate the concern, you know, being a resident of Everett and, and being on one side of parking myself, I can sometimes see the frustrations coming home, there's no parking. I get it. But I, I think the next thing that I think the next phase where I think we have to wait and see is how that whole sports complex takes, takes, you know, down there. I mean, the big thing with us is we don't want to change something and then after all of a sudden we get a whole sports complex down there and some things changed and we got to change it again. So we all know that the sports stadium's going down there, some other things are going to be moved down there. So I think you're right, Councilman, that we just take a look at it and when, once that piece is all done, we see how we can service everybody better with the, you know, with the football stadiums down there, the baseball, the tennis, and we take a look. And obviously if, you know, obviously if you know that neighborhood is getting, you know, really crazy with parking, you let us know, we, we can really concentrate on that. But I think that's the next thing that we have to take a look at. What's the next phase that's going to be down there? How is it going to impact it more? I, I think that's the next phase that I think we have to pay attention to and, you know, I just want to thank everybody for their patience and, and understanding where we were trying to go with this and no one knew that it was going to be this well we were all hoping, that's for sure, but I just, for, for trusting us to try to work a program through the chief and, and the mayor's office and, and obviously the council to have the foresight to ask great questions over the last three months and, and let's see how it plays out. And I think the next thing, phase is we see how this works out with the whole new sports complex down there and, and everything and then we can address that and see how that addresses. That is going to, you know, do some stuff down there and then we can introduce that down there if that's something that pleases everybody.
And I agree with Sergeant Gaff. I mean, and I think just with everything that went on with the opening of the resort and the open lines of communications, you know, everybody's willing to have an open dialogue and readdress the issues as they come along as well, so, I mean, we haven't been lacking in that respect, so I think it's, and I think we all learned a lot from the planning and everything that went in with the opening of the resort, so we can always just improve on that as well going forward.
I think that's important. I watched OT a few weeks ago and Bob DeSalvio was on there and he said you won't really feel the impact of the resort for twelve to eighteen months. You won't really feel the, the true impact of the community for twelve to eighteen months. So we continuously need to keep working on this as you guys have, as you said, because as his statement, twelve to eight months, eighteen months in an industry like this, you don't really feel the impact for, until that point of time.
But we will because we're the people with the boots on the ground, so we'll, we'll see it.
And we're still meeting with their transportation people. We have another big, you know, meeting coming up with transportation. We're staying with, you know, Mr. Falk hasn't forgot us, we're still meeting with him on, you know, to get things going and, you know, we, we know we have to clean some things up and, but it's nice to be able to pick little things instead of have to revamp a whole plan, I think.
Thank you. All set, Councilor? I had three more speakers, Council Marchese, Hanlon, and McKinnon. I'll go with Council Hanlon. Council Marchese is in the back, so I'll go with you first.
Officer Gaff, I just want to say truly an outstanding job you guys are doing down there, okay? But I have one question. And you had indicated a little bit earlier that if someone wanted to have a party down there and everything, they called for pass and everything. I wanted to know if that pass is for them, the family, or the ten cars that are going to show up?
So what happens is that if you're having a party down the LB, Lower Broadway Zone, and you invite twenty people to your cookout and we give them the twenty passes.
Okay.
We give them one for each cop. So, and it's only good for that day, it's marked that day, it's a white one and it's good for that day. Once that day is over, that pass is no longer any good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council Marchese?
I think I may have missed something. Mr. Hand, Council Handlin said, is there a seven, are you giving seven day and fourteen day passes out down that plaque?
We are not giving out, the Lower Broadway Zone is different. So on the Lower Broadway Zone, we have, so what happens is we, we gave out, we took away the, the blue stickers, gave them the black ones. The next one would be the Lower Broadway Visitor's Pass, okay? And that's only good for Lower Broadway, so they can't use that pass up in the, not Broadway.
Was it good for one day? They're not giving out seven day and fourteen day ones down there?
No, we do not give out one. So what happens is, so what happens is, we give out visitor's passes to the people of the LB Zone. So that is good for one year, but only one. So if you have a healthcare person or if you have your sister or brother come to visit, you have that one day pass to give to them. That belongs to you. You lose it, it's gone. We're not, you know, we're not giving you another one. So that belongs to the resident of that house.
And who enforces that?
That is the PEOs and they, they go around and check these plackets.
Yep.
Okay? The other plackets that we have, that we gave out was the thirty-one, which is now down to twenty-four, was to all the businesses that were down at the Low B, Lower Broadway Zone, okay? The auto body dealerships, some small stores that were still down there, the engineering, the paint company, we gave all them and they're good, they're good from the day, so they told us they're open Monday through Friday, seven AM to five PM. So that's what they got. If they were open up on Saturdays to one o'clock, we gave them from Monday to Saturday five o'clock. That is it. It's only good and they were blue sticker, blue plackets, they're only good during daytimes during the Lower Broadway Zone. And then the third one was the one day passes that if you have a barbecue or something, you come up and say, I'm having a barbecue, it's good for that day, one day only. The other thing is those plackets that you are talking about where someone come up, you got a relative coming for seven to ten days, you could come up. That's something that needs to be looked at.
Yeah, that's a scourge all over the city right now.
Yep, yep.
It's terrible.
I think that's time for another discussion and the chief said he's definitely willing to maybe get a committee together to speak to what we can change down and some tweaks and all that, and I, but I think that he's on board with that.
And my next question was only, it was about the Fania. They called him concerned, had no parking whatsoever.
Correct.
I mean, we can't, we can't give them one side parking there on.
So what the plan is, and we discussed this the last couple of weeks and we're going back and forth because we got to be careful, that is the truck route, right? So that's where all the.
But they, we've had parking there for a hundred years and trucks you got to buy there, so what's the difference?
Correct, but we were trying, we're trying to get them, we widened it and we did have some issues down there, but what we're trying to do is now for LaFonja and I talked to him, and what we're going to try to do is go from twelve o'clock in the afternoon to one in the morning, which would be two hour parking for his, for his people. And then after one o'clock, when his bar closes in restaurant, that will be go back to a restricted zone from one AM to noon time.
Good, that's good.
And that will take care of him and that will probably, might be the last business that we really have to, there's one other little green store we're working with, but I think that would be the last business that we will try to help out.
All right, thank you.
No, you're welcome.
Thank you, Councilor. Council McKinnon? Counsel McKinnon?
Thank you, Mr. President, to Sergeant Gaff. I was going to say, officer, but now I've seen the stripes, so it's Sergeant Gaff now. Joe, down there, let's see, I'm a believer in the stats. Obviously, you've been taking stats, so you've been doing the stats down there. Is there any way we can get a report back to us, each council member here, so that we can have those stats as well?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, we're entitled to them anyway, so we're just asking now.
It's just numbers. I mean, we got it broken down per shift, per day, for the first, for the first three months. We broke it down for how many parking tickets, just so you get...
Can we also do, and it would be the PEOs that would actually...
That would be the PEOs, yes, that would be the PEOs.
What about regular offices?
Um, that would be a separate, actually, no, that would be, that would be everybody, because that would be all the lower Broadway zone. So what we did was broke it up into three sections. We did restricted parking, which is if you were in a restricted zone, just for being restricted. Then we did LB resident zone parking, and then we did every other parking ticket, because if you went spreadsheet 50 violations, it would be crazy.
Yeah, yeah.
So we broke it down into three, restricted, LB, and then other.
If we, if we can just get it so that we could understand it, you know what I mean?
Absolutely.
And then, and then if we can get any breakdowns, like per shifts or whatever...
It's all in there. It's broken down per shift, per day.
Okay.
Yep, so it's all broken down per shift, per shift, day.
Because I believe in stats. Stats is a good thing.
Yep. I mean, you'll see that, that, you know, it's, when you look at the first number, at the total number, you're like, wow, that's a lot, but if you break it down to 212 or 213 shifts that we counted, it's five parking tickets.
You guys are doing, you're doing a good job down there, and this thing was like on the fly kind of. It was three months prior of like planning, I know that you were working on it before, but then you got, you know, the hammer dropped on you. So, it's a good thing. It's all working out, we'll say, right now.
Well, I think, I think it's everybody. I think it's everybody that there was any part to do with it.
And that was called a bouquet, and you should just accept it.
No, 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 no. There was, there was a lot of people that put a lot of time and energy in, and I just happen to be, and Mr. Donald and Jay just happened to be the people that collected the data from all the people that did, and it just, it was a great team effort even for all you folks up here, asking great questions and making sure we were on our A game, and that's what it's all about, to have the checks and balances.
We want, well, there's been discussion, you know now, of 24/7, and we're going to look at that eventually, so that you may have to come.
Can you wait 22 months?
You may have to.
Because that will give me my A game time.
I only got four months, Joe. I only got four months, brother. I beat you to it.
I know, you beat me.
So, but if we can just get that data, so that could be into the talks as well, and that might give us some guidelines to go off of.
I'll have my office scan it in, place it in the mailbox before lunch tomorrow.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
Nope.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Paul Tino, is that last speaker?
Thank you. Good evening, Sergeant Gaff.
Good evening.
Great job. You know, we talked quite a bit in the spring. We had a lot of questions about that. Do you have any data that affects the next level of Ward 1? The Revere Street, Second Street, Gladstone, Lewis, you know, Paris, any of those? Are you noticing any issues with their parking?
None. I mean, you know...
I have not heard from any of the residents.
We haven't, we have not heard, we haven't got any call. I don't believe the mayor's office has got any calls, and, you know, Joey Messina from Fox isn't calling us about people all over his area. We're just...
And that was my main concern in the spring.
No, absolutely.
Because again, we see a lot of that, the way the traffic impacts the stadium during graduation, just as an example.
Oh, yeah.
It's several blocks radius. But I just wanted to say, you know, you got a good plan in place. I was there for the opening. Traffic was minimal. It looks like people were taking advantage of the various options to get down there, and that's still continuing to happen. So, I just wanted to let you know that I'm very proud of the job you guys did. You addressed the main concerns for the residents down in lower Broadway. And again, if we're not seeing any impact on the next wave, beyond the rotary, that's where we're looking to hear if there's any more issues. I haven't heard anything from any of the residents down there who had spoke to me in the spring. You're not showing any impact of calls or excessive calls down there.
No.
That's a good thing, Ben. All right, well, thank you.
No.
Continue to do a great job for us. We appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
If I just may publicly, just to thank the PEOs for the wonderful job that they've, they've done. They were forced to work weekends for the whole summer to make this plan work, and I thought they did a phenomenal, phenomenal job, and I think they deserve a lot of credit for down there, and also Karen and Stacy and the parking. The job they did down and parking down there was phenomenal, putting all this together and just staying on top and keep the, keeping us abreast of all the information. I just think they publicly should be, you know, thanked for what they've done for this whole summer. It was a whole team, but they really did a great job.
Absolutely. Everyone bought their A game this summer.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, folks. If you need anything, make sure you let us know.
Thank you. Further on the next piece, I just want to let everybody know, a five-minute rule is when the person, the colleague, the council has the floor, it's his five minutes. So if the guest speaks for 15 minutes, it's still, it's only five minutes of the speaker, which is the council itself. So the council has five minutes to speak. So he speaks for four minutes, and the guest speaks for 15. That's still within the five minutes. Just want to let you know. Thank you.
Make motion and refer it back to the sponsor.
All in favor? I oppose, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Counsel Capone?
Can we take, I'll defer, excuse me. Can we take the item number 35 off the agenda, please?
Most should take 35. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, the ayes have it.
Item number 35, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilman Wayne A. Matuski that the City Council consider changing the charter to have ward counselors and ward school committee members only run for reelection in their respective wards and not citywide.
Counsel Matuski?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, the charter was changed six, seven years ago, and this bizarre piece that they put in that all district candidates have to run citywide has been troubling. So I put this on the calendar, and I just want to add, excuse me, a few council members to the piece. Councilman DePiero, Council McKinnon, Council Mackeysey, and Councilwoman Rosa de Florio to this piece. You know, I want to do it before this year's election, so I'm impartial to whatever the results may be, but we are the only city or town in this whole state, probably even in the country, that requires their district councilman to run citywide. Now, the reason that I put this on is, is because, you know, I'm going to give you an example. For instance, candidate A gets 80% of the vote in Ward 1. Candidate B gets 20%. Well, guess what? He wins in other parts of the city. And candidate B actually represents Ward 1. It's totally absurd. Now, I want to tell you another example. When this first came out, Councilman McKinnon was with me, the chairman of this commission, this charter commission. I asked him, "Why would you require city wards to be run citywide? I mean, I never heard of such a thing." Maybe I'm living in a different planet, and people have different agendas here, but a ward seat is a ward seat. You become an expert in your own neighborhoods. More people run, more people are active. It just makes sense. Well, the chairman said to me, and Leo, Councilman McKinnon was right next to me, he said to me, "We did it because of you, Matuski, because nobody's going to beat you in Ward 1." Well, that was before Mr. Capone came around. But the truth of the matter is, the truth of the matter is, that's what he said, and he was serious about it, okay? He was dead serious. And, yes, I was referring to that discussion we had at a function, and the chairman of the charter commission said that, "We did it because of you, because nobody's going to be..." Now, that was, you know, I felt kind of lousy, but I've been successful citywide in so many ways, so technically, it's probably a good thing for me, but I have talked to people throughout the state. Don't forget, I was at the state house for two years, and they said, a couple of them were city councilmen before they became state reps, they said, "You require your ward people to run citywide? It's on the bumper sticker. First of all, it's cost prohibitive. You know, there's a difference. When you run citywide, it costs some money, as we all know. Everybody here runs citywide. And if you're going to do it that way..." Now, I know everybody, "Oh, I like to vote for everybody," but that's not a democratic process. It's not fear. It isn't fear, and I've heard that too, you know? And I know there's some people, I love to vote for everybody too, but really, the person that lives in the ward should actually, you know, be voted on in the ward. So, you know, I put this before my colleagues, before this election, to get this squared away and straightened out. And I talked to the city solicitor in length tonight, excuse me, I have a slight cold, and she's willing to work with me on this. I don't know if it's a home rule petition or a new charter commission, but come on, this is, let's be honest. I'm going to try to be honest, because we are the, as I said, the only city in the whole state. It's confusing to voters, and, you know, you see a candidate sign, Councilman Ward 2, we'll use that for an example, voted citywide. It is the most bizarre thing, and not only for the city council, for the school committee also. And I think that you'd actually get more candidates that would be interested in running in their own particular neighborhood. Now, I used to love being the Ward 1 councilman, but I really loved being the councilman at large. But the truth of the matter is, I knew, I've been at every step in Ward 1. I've been to every home over the years. There isn't a porch I haven't been on or a property I haven't been in. And Ward 1, that is, you know? So, I became pretty good at that. I knew where I wanted to go and where I shouldn't go, you know? But, you know, let's get this squared away. It's only fear, it's democratic, and if anybody else wants to add their name along with those I mentioned, let's get this squared away and fix it, because it's wrong, and it's time to fix this. You know, and I wanted to do it before this year's election, so nobody could say, "Well, you know, you did it for that reason." I don't know what the results are going to be. But let's do, I did talk to the, excuse me, the city clerk about this. He's willing to work with me on it. And I, you know, I just throw this out there, I'm not throwing it out there, I'm putting it on there. Let's get it fixed, and I appreciate those who support me in this matter.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Hanlon?
Okay. Number one is that what, and I don't mean to reprimand Mr. Matuski, but that never happened in that committee, that they said the reason that they put this in was because of you. Now, the chairman may have said that to you personally, and I don't doubt that. I don't doubt, but the fact of the matter is, that never came up in our meeting, that this was done for a particular person.
You were on the chat room.
Yes, I was. The other thing too, is that, you know, I'm still kind of sure that you cannot change the method of elections unless you have another charter. So that's got to go through a charter change. And the other thing is, the reason that we put it in that the counselors have to run citywide, and this is the real reason that we put it in, is because the counselors vote for everything all over the city. So if you've got a counselor from Ward 1, and he, and he only wants to be voted on from Ward 1, then why should he vote for something in Ward 6? But if he was in all, voting in all the wards, he'd have all the rights in the world. I mean, I think they have all the rights to run anyway, but I'm just trying to say, this is the reason that why these things were put in, so you'll understand it, you know? And that's the main idea, that you can't have a, I mean, what if the counselor from Ward 6 wanted to go down and do something in Ward 1, and they wanted to overrule the council from Ward 1? Well, that's what they can do now. But if it was the other way around, that you only have, you only, you only are elected from your ward, then you should only represent your ward, and you'd be the one, the main person in that ward. It'd sort of be like a, I don't know, a mini father for all the people that were down there, you know? Other councils shouldn't be able to interrupt what you were doing in that particular ward. That's the reason why it was down there, no other reason, just because those wards counselors could vote for something in another ward. That's the reason it was changed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel McKinnon?
On that, I remember questioning the chairperson at the time here in this chamber about this, and he told me that it was done in other communities this way, which he lied boldly about it to all of us. So, don't know why, don't really care, but now, this might resolve some of that activity that was happening back then. I know you were on the committee, John, and I know you, you actually served on it well, so I'm just, I'm just thinking now that we need to fix something that was told to us that it was done in other communities that wasn't done in other communities, and it should have been done a long time ago, but it wasn't. So, here we are now, and trying to fix something that was possibly broken, maybe, if so, if not, but we need to at least look at it.
Yeah.
At least look at it.
Absolutely.
You know, we shouldn't just throw things away, because, you know, there's opinions and stuff like that, but I think we should just look at it anyway, to see if we can do it. If we can, we can. If we can't, then we all vote on it. Thank you, Free Time.
Thank you, Counselor.
It's his piece.
Mr. President, nobody else wants to speak?
Any more speakers? No, Counsel Matuski on the floor.
Mr. President, I want to thank you, and I want to thank Counsel McKinnon for his Previous speaker mentioned that you can vote for anything over the entire city. It's not to be that way. If you represent a district, you are the expert. That's why, when certain members, it's my ward, you can't go back and forth if you're voted citywide. I could give you a few examples, but I don't want to drag this out, because I know the consensus of this council is in favor of this. And I did talk to the city solicitor, so without bringing her up here, I want to refer it to the attorney for the city and Mr. Canelio to work on this, so let's get it fixed. This is a mistake. Any, now, with the exception of the previous member of the committee there, the charter committee, this is not right. You talk to anybody. We want to send it to the city solicitor, the city clerk, the election department, and get this squared away, and see what can be fixed before the next city election. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
It's secular, but...
Before we...
You have to amend it first.
That's what the men had, all the names again, please?
Rosa, McKinnon, Mackeysey, DePiero. Rosa, I'm sorry, I said Rosa.
That's fine.
We know who you are.
All in favor in that motion?
Aye.
I oppose, the ayes have it.
That's on the amendment.
It's on the amendment, yes.
On the motion before us?
On the motion. Refer the city solicitor in city clerk's office.
City clerk's.
In the election department itself.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Can we take 44, 50, and 51 off the calendar?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Yep.
I oppose, the ayes have it. That was 44, 50, and 51 off the agenda.
I believe these all tie into this piece that's before.
Yes, in council by mistake. I actually, you'll see, I put it in there. I actually, it was a little bit of confusion, and I actually put one of them in there a second time, whatever, but, these one here.
Yeah, that's not the, that's not the correct one. The correct one would be the later one. This one, no action necessary, is a, and then the later one is the correct one, yes. I just wanted to let you know.
Yes, as you know, it says in your thing, no action necessary, so, but I'll, you know, just for the sake of reading, I have to read 44, that the Everett City Council hereby amends the rules of the Everett City Council by adding a new section 8.1D, and no action is taken, is necessary on that, so if you just want to make a motion to...
So move.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, the ayes have it.
No action.
And what was the other ones? I'm sorry.
That would be 50 and 51, ma'am, our clerk.
Okay, item number 50 is a, Mr. President, is an order offered by Council Michael K. Mackeysey, that the Everett City Council hereby amends Rule 8 of the City Council rules to add new subsection D to set criteria for new business. Counsel Mackeysey?
I believe subsection D, self-explanatory on the printout before you, and what it actually is, Sergeant, if you'd like to read it, I'll...
I think just it makes sense to read D and E, and I'll read them together, because they go consecutive. I know it's, not to jumble it, but I just, so you know, because it all goes in the same subsection.
Yep, so should we read 51 also before you do anything?
Yes, that just makes sense. That's all right, Counselor.
Yes.
Before you do that, just read item 51.
Item number 51, Mr. President, is an order offered by Council John F. Hanlon, that the Everett City Council hereby amends Rule 8 of the City Council rules to add a new subsection E, to allow an agenda item to be before the City Council without a motion, so that the council may discuss the item without violating parliamentary so that the council may discuss the item without violating parliamentary procedure.
So there... So with some work from both Council Mackey and Council Hanlon, who both spent some time in my office over the summer to work on these pieces, and they probably need a little more, and I know we want to send it to Legislative Affairs, but Rule Eight is reading of the business agenda papers and courtesies. ABC are already existing. Item D is Council Mackey's, and it states, "Only the lead sponsor presenting a new piece of business placed on the city council agenda under new business shall be allowed to discuss the item and may do so for no more than three minutes. After the lead sponsor has spoken, the city council may, one, vote to postpone, or, two, refer the subject matter to the appropriate committee. The matter may be open for discussion to the entire body if the chair decides that the action requires the city council's immediate attention or is declared an emergency measure. A vote for favorable action of the order shall always be allowed barring any further discussion of the item by anyone other than the lead sponsor." And E, Council Hanlon's new subsection under eight, is upon the completion of the reading by the clerk of the city council. An item from the city council agenda at the meeting of the city council, said item shall be considered to be before the city council for the purpose of debate and/or a vote." So...
Council Mackey.
I just think this helps us move along, you know, because this is supposed to be a council where we either... We ship things out to committees, that's how it's supposed to work, not discuss each new piece here. And we're talking 20 minutes on a piece that's going to a council anyhow. Come to the council meeting and, you know, express yourself, and when it comes back out, you can also speak if you're not in favor or not. And I think this will move these meetings along a lot quicker. I like favorable action on it, but I believe we have to send this to a committee?
We don't have to, but I mean, I know we...
But I talked to Council Capone.
I spoke briefly with Council Capone, who's the chairman of Legislative Affairs and Elections. I think there was some things he wanted to look at, Councilor, so it's probably better to send it there, so we don't have to keep bouncing back and forth between meetings.
All right, now, that would be what I have to say. Our Council Hanlon, I believe, got PC, if you'd like to discuss it.
Council Hanlon.
My piece is very simple, you know. In all the parliamentary procedure classes that we went through, that says that when the clerk reads an item, if the board doesn't move favorable action and second it, the piece is not before us, and we never do that. I just don't want some shoppey to come along and say, you know, "They passed this thing without having it read properly." So this now says that after the city clerk reads it, it shall be before us without any vote taken. Every item. So favorable action on both amendments, Mr. Chairman?
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It would be a roll call.
Roll call.
I do have to caution you for two reasons. One, I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt you, that a city council rule can never be passed, or any rule, can never be passed in the same evening it is presented. The public has the right to review it. It has to be logged into my office, and I have to publicize it. So, and that goes for every board and commission, not just city councils. So we need to postpone it to the next meeting or send it to the committee.
I would feel better send it to Legislative Affairs. No? Send it in two weeks?
Council Capone.
Let me weigh in on it if I can. Thank you, Mr. President. I think E is pretty straightforward, because unless there is some sort of an action, we have been doing it right, but that's fine. With D, I just have a couple of questions that I'd like to talk with the sponsor about. We're talking about speaking for three minutes, but we have the five minutes, so we're going to get into a thing where now we have to worry about three minutes. What is it, five minutes? That might get a little confusing. And the other thing is, I understand the intent of the sponsor, and if you have an individual that presents a piece, and they want to refer it to committee, we shouldn't beat it around for 45 minutes and then send it to a committee. But the way it's written, it looks like the lead speaker can speak, they're the only ones that speak, and then either it gets postponed or it goes to a committee. And I think it should be that if the intent of the sponsor is to postpone or to send to a committee, then there should be no more discussion. This body should always have the ability to discuss something if, you know, if they have an interest with it. But if a lead sponsor wants to postpone or send to committee, that's it. It should be done. And I think the way it's written is saying we can just postpone or just send it to the committee. I think we want to do a little different with it, but I'd like the chance to talk to the sponsor about it. So, I mean, if you want to lay it over, we can do it, that's fine. It's a minor tweak, or we can put it in the committee. Either way is fine. I'm fine either way. But I wouldn't want to vote on it tonight.
But postpone for two weeks, make the adjustments, and bring them to us in two weeks.
Come back in two weeks with the adjustments.
Yeah, come back in two weeks with the adjustments.
Council Matusky on that motion?
Thank you, Mr. President. On number D, a letter D, rather, "The matter may be open for discussion to the entire body if the chair..." Why doesn't that say president? I know. I mean, I'm just being particular here, but... So the president can... President can decide if it needs immediate attention, and people can speak on it, is that right?
Correct. And just so you know, we don't use the word... I didn't use the word president, that was my decision, only because, say, the president relinquishes the chair, and you sit there, you're not technically the president, you're the chair. I'm just using parliamentary procedure, so I don't want someone to say, oh, well...
Whoever sits in the president's chair is the president, no?
No, they're the chair.
They're the chair.
Acting president.
Okay, but it's technically called the chair. I don't know, whatever you want to do, that's why.
All right, but the president... The chair, the president, can decide whether to open it up if it's a major issue?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make that clear. Excuse me?
It's the motion before us, motions to, um...
There's two, actually. There's two motions. I don't remember a second, I'm sorry. I just know there's a motion to postpone for two weeks and a motion to send it to Legislative Affairs. I don't remember a second on either, so...
So postpone for two weeks.
I'm going to postpone for two weeks with the adjustments.
With the adjustments in two weeks.
And I have a second. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry.
You want to say, Council Mackey with that?
I must have the two-week thing, yeah. That's no problem. It's going to be the same vote, you know, whether we said Legislative Affairs are wait two weeks. So the two weeks is fine. Council Hanlon?
Sure.
All right, so the motion was later for two weeks, and with the results in two weeks, how we changed it. I had a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, postpone for two weeks.
Thank you. I would love to.
I think we're at seven.
Read number seven on the agenda, please. Council Capone.
Could we suspend the rules and take items seven, eight, nine, and 10 collectively?
Motion wants to take seven, eight, nine, and 10 collectively? Seconded, all in favor? Ayes have it. Clerk, when you are ready, read number seven, please.
Yes, could I butt in?
Also, could we suspend Rule 20 for the evening, because I don't know if anybody's here, and if their first-time appointments are supposed to go to committee?
Yes.
Second motion, Rule 20?
I just wanted to tell you that seven, eight, nine, 10, 41, and 42, they're all for the same board, so I think we could take them collectively, still vote separately.
Amendment and add 41 and 42 as well, please.
So seven, eight, nine, and 10, 41, 42.
All six, but we have to vote on them separately, because they're orders, just so you know, but it's just easier for me to read them all at once. Item... Yes, item number... Mr. President, councilors, these are all appointments. All six are appointments offered by Council Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president, that the Everett City Council hereby confirms the appointment of John Norton as a member of the Conservation Commission for a one-year beginning September 9, 2019. This is a renewal. Number eight is an appointment offered by... That the Everett City Council hereby confirms the appointment of Iman Kernan as a member of the Conservation Commission for a three-year term beginning September 9, 2019. He is a renewal. Number nine, that the Everett City Council hereby confirms the appointment of Darrell Colson as an alternate member of the Conservation Commission for a two-year term beginning September 9, 2019. She is a new member. Item number 10, that the Everett City Council hereby confirms the appointment of Kyle Colson as the alternate member of the Conservation Commission for a two-year term beginning September 9, 2019. Mr. Colson is a new member. Item number 41 is that the Everett City Council hereby confirms Rita Hasham for... As a member of the Conservation Commission for a term of three years beginning September 9, 2019. She is a current member, renewal. And item 42, that the Everett City Council hereby confirms the appointment of Kathleen O'Brien as a member of the Conservation Commission for a one-year term beginning September 9, 2019. She is a renewal also, and I just want you to know, you'll be seeing these over the next couple of months, little by little, each board, because we are finally getting them on track where they expire not altogether, you know, staggered terms.
Favorable action on all the orders, voting individually.
All right.
Roll call vote, please.
For item number seven, Council Capone.
Yes.
Council DeFlorio.
Yes.
Council DePiero.
Yes.
Council Hanlon.
Yes.
Council Mackey.
Yes.
Council McKinnon.
Yes.
Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Council Seminelli.
Yes.
President Delasola.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays. Item nine, Council Capone.
Yes.
Council DeFlorio.
Yes.
Council DePiero.
Yes.
Council Hanlon.
Yes.
Council Mackey.
Yes.
Council McKinnon.
Yes.
Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Council Seminelli.
Yes.
President Delasola.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Thank you.
And President Delasola.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays. Item 10, Council Capone.
Yes.
Council DeFlorio.
Yes.
Council DePiero.
Yes.
Council Hanlon.
Yes.
Council Mackey.
Yes.
Council Matusky.
Yes.
Council McKinnon.
Yes.
Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Council Seminelli.
Yes.
And President Delasola.
Yes.
And item number 41, Council Capone.
Yes.
Council DeFlorio.
Yes.
Council DePiero.
Yes.
Council Hanlon.
Yes.
Council Mackey.
Yes.
Council Matusky.
Yes.
Council McKinnon.
Yes.
Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Council Seminelli.
Yes.
President Delasola.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays. You have passed all six orders. I do have one more, if you could take out of order, is item number 30.
Motion made, so move.
Seconded, to take number 30, all in favor? Number seven?
This was supposed to be under the mayor's communication, so it's new, but it comes from the mayor. Item 30, Mr. President, is an order offered by Council Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president, that the Everett City Council hereby grants an exemption to allow George E. Sansucci permission to serve as a consultant in the assessor's office. I'm going to read the actual order, so it'll make a little more sense, to designate George E. Sansucci as a special municipal employee in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 268A, Section 20B, for the purposes of working for the assessor's office as a consultant for the city of Everett. Mr. Sansucci is employed by the city of Everett as a consultant under the direction of the assessor. This designation is needed for him to be employed as a consultant while he is still employed by the state of Massachusetts in order to avoid a violation of Massachusetts General Laws 268A, Section 20. He is a consultant. He works with the Board of Assessors in the state, and you cannot do both without this. So it's a formality, but we need to do it to allow him to serve on this. And, Mr. President, I will need you to sign the documents on time this week. Okay?
Good question.
Second.
Is that a paid position?
He's a consultant, yes.
Okay.
So he's a professional assessor, so I think he's... I don't know if I should say what he's working on, because I think he's working on something specific, so...
Yep.
But he... Okay, so... But I think, I believe that... Yeah, I believe that's what he's doing, so, um... Yes.
Council Hanlon?
Is there a timeline?
The designation?
As long as he serves.
No, sir. As long as he serves, he'll be a special municipal employee. Once he seves his ties with the city, he would have to come back before us. But, um... So I would say there's some type of contract or agreement with him. Do you have a... Well, I'm sorry, do we have a motion for favorable action and second?
We did.
Okay.
We're on number 23.
On the order.
I'm correct?
This is going to be a roll call. Council Capone.
Yes.
Council DeFlorio.
Yes.
Council DePiero.
Yes.
Council Hanlon.
Yes.
Council Mackey.
Yes.
Council Matusky?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Council McKinnon.
Yes.
Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Council Napolitano.
Yes.
Council Seminelli.
Yes.
President Delasola.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order.
Could you suspend the rules, take item 43 from the calendar?
Second.
Item number 43. Yes. Is an order offered by Council Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president, that the Everett City Council hereby approves 605 Broadway LLC, special exemption for 605 Broadway under Appendix A zoning six sections, 6A8 special exemption. Yep.
What is 605 Broadway? Can you please explain that to us?
I'm going to... Yes. Yes. That is the, I believe it was Dr. Mavilio's property? Am I mistaken? That was purchased. Can I read the exemption, so you understand what you're fully voting on? Section... Excuse me, exemption eight. Eight in zoning under special exemption. The intent of this paragraph is to provide by special exemption... Exception, excuse me, granted by the city council, a mixture of residential apartments, retail trade and services, offices, off-street parking, and accompanying accessory uses, all within one structure that normally would be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the requirements of the business district, except building height and area. A special exception may be granted only by the city council, subject to the following regulations. One, minimum lot area of 30,000 square feet and a minimum frontage of 200 feet. Two, no building or structure shall be constructed unless the lot is at least 90% within the business district and the building completely within the business district. Three, compliance with Section 6, except building height and area and Section 17. Four, all uses to be within the same structure, provided all residential uses shall be located not lower than the second floor of the structure. Five, the city council confirmation with Chapter 40A, Section 4, 15, 16, 17, and 21 of Massachusetts General Laws, uses specifically prohibited. A, manufacturing and industrial; B, wholesale and warehousing; and C, salvage and junk operations. This is to allow a property that has already received both zoning board approval and planning board approval. I spoke briefly with Mr. Soper two weeks ago, and the property owner, it's 605 Broadway LLC is the name of the LLC, to... They're doing mixed use. It's, I believe, 18 or 22 units upstairs and a couple of units of retail, and it's... This is one of those few things that you actually get involved with on zoning. It's a requirement.
They've already started this building?
They have not. They've been approved by zoning and planning, last step is city council. I'm sorry.
There's no park?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Council Mackey.
What are the parking restrictions?
There's no... There's... Well, I'm not the planning guy, but I know, from what I remember, there's... They have no... They cannot get any residential stickers. There'll be no parking for the residents on the property.
Yep.
I believe there might be a few for the commercial, but that I can't even tell you.[1442.33] I do know that the residential is not, there's no parking for residential, there's no stickers allowed. So they wouldn't, anyone that lives at that property cannot come here to get a residential sticker.
So we're gonna have twenty-two units, twenty units?
I think it's eighteen, Council.
And we're gonna be retail now. How the retail, how are you gonna make money if you can't park?
I think there's a few for the retail. I don't want you to quote me, because I'm not in a re-planning and zoning board meeting, but...
Yeah, I mean, that lot's big enough to put plenty of park in there. If you go underneath, you put an elevator. I don't know why there's no parking here. It's ridiculous. It's a huge, huge lot. I'm just expressing myself, that's all.
No, I understand. Just so you know, the only reason this is before you is because they're doing mixed use. If they kept this completely residential, from top to bottom, you would not see this. It's already passed by the zoning and planning. So it's only because of the mixed-use component, which soon will be coming before you for a change in zoning, which I know some of the members, Mr. Napolitano and other ones, are gonna be working on some new zoning changes.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Council Florio?
But please don't take everything I say completely. I am not the planner and I don't know everything about this project, so I don't want you to take everything I'm saying to heart.
Do we have specifications? I wasn't finished originally.
Council Florio has the floor.
Originally, I was never finished with my questions.
Go ahead, Council.
So I'm sorry, but I've given up my cheer, my time most of the time, not this time.
Yes.
I wanna know, how many bedrooms are there? Is it eighteen? Is it one bedroom, two bedroom? What is, do we have any specifications on this at all?
No, because that's, that's not, I believe it's not what you're voting on. You're only voting on because...
What are we voting on tonight?
To allow a property not to have solely residential to do a mixed-use prop, building. That's what section eight's exception is. So you're allowing this property to have a few commercial spots on the bottom and residential on top. It's just a special exception in our zoning laws that is a requirement.
I understand, but we should still have specification on what's there? Three bedrooms, four bedrooms, five bedrooms, one bedroom? I mean, I understand we're only...
I believe they're all small units. Either micro or studios or one bedroom. I don't believe there are any large units.
No large?
Not that I know of. Again, I don't wanna say for sure, because it's not my place and I don't know, so...
Is this something that has to be voted on tonight? Or is this gonna hold up? I don't wanna hold up any project.
The longer you don't vote on it, one way or the other, the longer the project will wait for the, the developer cannot do anything until this passes. He cannot start his project.
But it's not gonna be a matter of life and death for two weeks?
You can do as you please. I'm just telling you, that's what holds it up.
Council Hanlon and Council Capone?
Just make a motion. I'd make a motion to postpone it for two weeks.
Council Capone on the motion? Did you want to?
Yeah, on that motion. One of the reasons, a quick question through you to our clerk. Once we vote on this, it's just because of the mixed use, then it's out of our hands and out of our hands forever? And it's with the board or no?
Well, the board has already, everything's already been approved.
So it doesn't come back to us to look at it?
No, because this is, this is the end.
Yeah, so I think it's a good motion. I was gonna ask to postpone it till the next meeting, if we get the specifications on what exactly they're looking to do. Because it's already been approved, so we should know exactly what's going on.
Yeah, I'll ask Mr. Souza to...
Council Florio, you made the motion for later for two weeks.
Second.
That was seconded. All in favor? All opposed? I'd have it for two weeks. Can you read number thirteen or fourteen? Fourteen?
Item fourteen is an order offered by Council Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president that the Everett City Council hereby approves acceptance of River Green Drive as built. If you remember, whoever was here at the special meeting, I gave out a bunch of those lodge maps. Again, I don't wanna speak on this, but I don't know if anyone in the audience can, but from the city...
Council Florio?
Is anybody here? I understand we got a map, but we have no...
No, no, I know.
We have no explanation with the map. So is there anybody here that can explain it to us? Or do we lay it over for another two weeks?
Yeah, I would say lay it over, because I don't know one way or the other. I thought someone from Encore would be here.
Okay, so the motion would be to lay it over for two weeks, because we want explanation on what's going on?
Yeah, I was asking about Mr. Souza and someone from Encore, right?
Yeah, invite the people that are interested in whatever they wanna do.
The motion was seconded by Council Hanlon. Did you wanna?
I'm all set.
On the motion? Okay. So second for next meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk, can you read fifteen when you're ready?
Yes. These are petitions and licenses. Item number fifteen is a petition offered by Council Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president that the Everett City Council hereby approves a second-hand dealer's antique precious metals and, nope, just precious metals renewal for Mazel Gold and collectibles. We do not have a pawn broker. That is incorrect. You are only approving second-hand antique and precious metal. He did not mark off pawn broker, and we do not have regulations for them yet. It's on the application, because we do have, we started, but there's no full regulations. He did not request it, and it's through zoning, so it's not on there. So I'm telling you, disregard it. You're only approving a second-hand antique and precious metal, no pawn broker. I just want you to know what you're voting on before...
You got a favorable action, did you?
And all, everything's in order.
All in favor?
Aye.
No to roll call vote, Mr. Chairman? Sorry, I'm almost there. This is for favorable action for the three licenses, second-hand antique and precious metals. Council Capone?
Yes.
Council DeFlorio?
Yes.
Council DePero?
Yes.
Council Hanlon?
Yes.
Council Mackeysey?
Yes.
Council Matusky?
Yes.
Council McKinnon?
Yes.
Council Napolitano?
Yes.
Council Seminelli?
Yes.
And President Delasola.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero neas, you have passed the order. Item sixteen is a petition offered by Council Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president that the Everett City Council hereby approves the Class II motor vehicle dealer license renewal for Woodlawn Auto Sales at Three Woodlawn Ave. All papers are in order.
Second.
Seconded.
Council Capone? Council DeFlorio?
Yes.
Council Hanlon?
Yes.
Council Mackeysey?
Yes.
Council Matusky?
Yes.
Council McKinnon?
Yes.
Council Napolitano?
Yes.
Council Seminelli?
Yes.
And President Delasola.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero neas, you have so passed the order.
You read number seventeen, please.
Is a petition offered by Council Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president that the Everett City Council hereby approves the Class I motor vehicle dealer license renewal for Vigor Diesel Injection Service at Two River Green Drive. All paperwork is in order.
Second.
This is a move from...
Roll call vote, please.
Council Capone?
Yes.
Council DeFlorio?
Yes.
Council Hanlon?
Yes.
Council Mackeysey?
Yes.
Council Matusky?
Yes.
Council McKinnon?
Yes.
Council McLaughlin?
Yes.
Council Napolitano?
Yes.
Council Seminelli?
Yes.
And President Delasola.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero neas, you have so passed the order. Item eighteen is a petition offered by Council Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president that the Everett City Council hereby approves the new precious metals license for Ot Gold Jewelry at One Fifty-Nine Main Street.
Second.
So this would go to the business community?
Excuse me.
On that, on that motion, I have three speakers. Council Mackeysey?
Is this a new license?
Yeah. I believe this is the place that was on Broadway.
Was on, no, it was not Broadway. It was on, was it on the Parkway before?
Ot Gold?
Was that on the corner?
So, so, yeah, they existed in the city. I believe they moved locations.
Okay.
So they've had a license, but they're in a new location.
Who is the operator of that?
I'm gonna tell you. One moment, sir. One second. Applicant is Ronaldo J. Borges. So I believe it's, I would say it's a new license.
Send it to committee.
It's gotta go to committee, right?
Yes, I think so.
All right.
Councilors, councilors. Council Mackeysey, you all set?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Council Hanlon, did you wanna speak? Council McLaughlin, did you wanna speak?
Can anybody just tell me where on Main Street this new business is gonna be located?
One fifty-nine. So, one fifty-nine is probably, you think that's in the stripper stores right after Otavio's, maybe, in that area? Oh, that's that far down? Okay. So it's the other way a little bit. All right. You know the numbers, you live there. Okay, that's where it is. You're very welcome. So the motion was made and seconded to send to CBD?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
You have so referred. Item nineteen is a committee of the hall report. It's a resolution offered by Council Fred Capone that a representative of the mayor's office and community development appear at the next city council meeting to explain the terms of the contract with Blue Bike and to discuss the proposed locations within the city.
Council Capone?
Yeah, well, thank you, Mr. President. As you recall, it was supposed to go to a committee of the hall. We had five members show. Unfortunately, there wasn't a representative from the mayor's office, there wasn't a representative from community development. They did put a little packet together for us to review, and there was a lot of information in there. In there, they did say that they were looking to try to restructure some of the parking spots. There was a capital investment of three twenty-five. There was ongoing maintenance annually, about eighty-eight thousand dollars. I would think that there's probably some sort of a grant that's attached to that, but it would've been nice if it was either in the publication or someone told us that. So right now, we don't have those answers. So what I would do is I'd ask that we lay this over to our next meeting, ask them to provide that information. How much of that money is grant, unless we have that?
No, I just, no, I just wanna tell you how to do that.
Okay.
Because there was no quorum and no one made a motion at that meeting, so there's no such, technically like there's no meeting. It's actually just in limbo. So if you would like to, it can stay in limbo and you can have another committee of the hall, or you're gonna discharge the committee and pull it out and then make a motion.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we do that?
I just want you to do it properly.
No, 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 why don't we do that? We'll discharge the committee of the hall. If we, we'll start there.
Yeah.
So we'll discharge the committee of the hall.
Discharge the committee.
Okay, on that motion, I got Council Florio.
Well, let's vote on that first.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it?
Thank you. And on this, I would just say that we postpone it to our next meeting, asking for that information. I would, I would have to think that there's got to be some sort of a grant that's attached to this. But I know that some of the members that were there, it was the first time we heard that there was a financial obligation for the city.
Right.
So we wanna make sure exactly what we're looking at. There was some discussion about relocating some of the bike racks. I'd like to know what the progress is on that. And again, the whole thing, when it started, this membership said we wanted to be involved with locations. So we wanna make sure that we resend that message and that before anything else happens, that this body is consulted in terms of where things are gonna go.
Second.
On the motion, I got two speakers. Council Florio and Council McLaughlin.
Council Capone addressed everything I was gonna ask, and I know there's some kind of a grant, we just don't know how much. So we would obviously like that information. And I don't know if Council Capone wants them to, come here or can they just address it in writing? As long as we have it in writing, I would agree to that. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Council McLaughlin?
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'd like to ask them also if they could give us the list of the spots that they're trying to relocate and their plan of when they will be relocated. Because there's one specifically that I'm really concerned about that's down on Main Street. I know there's several of them that need to be addressed, but there's one that's really concerning, which is down near Prescott Street, that has caused a major inconvenience to that business on Main Street. So I know they've been working together to try to relocate that, but I'm wondering if they can give us a detailed list of which spots are going to be relocated that are currently in place and a timeframe of when those locations will be moved at the request of either residents or commercial property owners that have contacted the city councilors. Appreciate that if they could give us the detailed report as well. And last question is, will there be a financial occurrence with the Blue Bike program annually? And I'm not sure if that was...
I think we'll get those answers in two weeks.
In two weeks? They're gonna, they'll provide those answers to us?
Okay. Council Florio? Council McLaughlin, you all set in the floor? Council Florio?
What I actually would like to know is, obviously, the Blue Bikes, they pay. People pay when they get on it. That income come to us, obviously, right? I would think. I don't know, I'm confused.
Hopefully, in two weeks, all these questions are answered.
I'd tell you what, you know what? I think there's enough questions.
Yeah.
I think we better have people here.
Committee?
Yeah, I mean, if we can get a committee to show.
No, I would, I would bring the people here.
You know me, I never see people here, but I think that's the best way to go.
Yeah.
I think there's too many questions, and it really could be its own meeting. We did try it before, we can try it again if you think that that's the better way to go. It was the summer, so it kinda, I think people were a little rusty, but we do need, we do need representatives here and the membership here in order to conduct it, so...
Okay.
Don't look at me, I'm not...
No, I'm wondering if maybe we shouldn't discharge the committee of the hall, leave it there, reschedule it.
We can always...
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but my recommendation would be to have a meeting at six-thirty before our council meeting. So we're already here that night, okay? Because, I mean, people do have commitments. I mean, you know, people have whatever, vacation time, not even vacation. So...
So in two weeks, we can have a meeting?
So if you know in two weeks you're having, you're having a meeting at seven o'clock, we come here at six-thirty, can we discuss it? And whatever we don't finish, we finish at seven o'clock.
Yeah, makes sense.
But if ours moving the bikes, why can't they move them before two weeks? Why do we have to wait till two weeks for them to move them? Make a phone call and ask them if they can move them.
President, on the motion? I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Council McLaughlin?
Just for clarification, I agree with Council DeFlorio. I've been asking since June to have one removed on the corner of Prescott Street and Main Street since June, councillor, and it's now September and we haven't got it removed. If you can get it removed in the next two weeks, please do so. But I have, I've been unsuccessful. Again, it removed since June, they've been requesting it.
I said, Council, Council Capone?
Yeah, and I have, when we first put this piece in, one of the reasons why I put it in is there's a huge display that's on the sidewalk in front of two residential properties on Main Street. And so we requested that be moved. So I know they said that they are looking to relocate, but the information was vague and unfortunately, without anybody here, we couldn't get that information. So as, as Council McLaughlin has expressed his frustration, I've had mine too, and it's been since June, so hopefully someone will be here at the next meeting, we can get it resolved.
So the motion wants to have a meeting of a whole before our next meeting at six-thirty?
That's right.
Okay. That was seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Someone from the mayor's office, or Mr. O'Donnell and them. I have it in my notes. Yeah, Mr. Monty also. I just always do planning in the mayor for these type of issues.
Clerk?
I'm sorry. What number was it?
Number twenty-one, please.
Thank you. This is a committee on government operations committee report. Mr. President, it's a resolution offered by Councilor Stephen Seminelli that is on to the mayor or someone from his office appear at the next government operations committee meeting with an update on the improvements to Everett's Road as well as other work that is needed in that area.
Council Seminelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, to you for Councilman Seminelli. Refer to public service and public safety.
Second the motion.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Number twenty-two?
Twenty-two.
Is, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Council Michael J. McLaughlin that a representative from the traffic commission appear at the next government operations committee meeting to discuss the renewal process for handicap signs on streets once they are issued.
Council McLaughlin?
Mr. President, make a motion, we refer this back to sponsor. And just to let anybody know that if they have, if they know of a location on a street that is no longer needed of a handicap spot, Sergeant Gaff has been working with myself and other colleagues this summer to remove some of those and to free up parking spots on different streets throughout the city. So if you know of an area that has a handicap spot that no longer is needed in that neighborhood, hopefully you can contact Sergeant Gaff and help free up some of the spots on a particular street in the city. So at this time, make a motion, refer it back to sponsor. Thanks Sergeant Gaff for his work.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk, can you read number twenty-three?
Mr. President, item twenty-three is a resolution offered by councilors, Rosa DeFlorio, oh, no, Council Rosa DeFlorio and Anthony DePero, requesting input from the administration at the next government operations committee meeting on the idea of online water usage and account management.
Council DePero?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Demus appeared before the committee as well as Mr. LaRivere from the Water Department. They explained to us that a ICE program is in the works where residents and business owners will be able to go online and monitor the usage, just more online activity. There'll be a big rollout with a lot of social media and local advertisements where everyone's aware of it, and that plan should be before this entire city council some point soon, so we can add our input to it. So I would like to refer this back to sponsor.
Thank you. Seconded. All in favor, back to sponsor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Can you read number twenty-four, please?
Item number twenty-four. Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Council Michael J. McLaughlin that the police chief, Stephen Maisy, appear at the first meeting in September to discuss the recent arrest of gang members in the past three months and to provide specifics of each incident.
Council McLaughlin?
Mr. President, thank you. I actually, we actually made a motion in committee that we would table this for one month, that we would hold it over to the October meeting. month and we would hold it over to the October meeting. Going to have some discussions with Chief Maisie and will address it in October. Thank you.
You're talking about in committee, right? Because it says grant for the time. Okay. Just want to make sure. Yeah.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Can you read number 26, please, on the agenda?
Sure.
Item number 26. Mr. President, there's a resolution offered by Michael J. McLaughlin that a representative from the mayor's office and Department of Transportation appear at the next government operations meeting to discuss the repair of a transformer on Crystal Parthia Way.
Council McLaughlin?
I'm sorry, Mr. President. Mr. President, I think there is a communication from Mr. Soper on item 26.
Yep. Would you like me to read the email?
If Clerk Canelio could just read that briefly.
Council McLaughlin, please convey, following to, sorry, to Council McLaughlin. The Inspection Services Department, through its wire inspector Rich Connors, has reached out to the State Department of Conservation and Recreation, D.C.R., and is currently working together to resolve any issues pertaining to the operation of the pedestrian lights and the transformer located at San Tilly Circle, Best, Jim Soper, CBI.
Mr. President, at this time, I'm going to refer it back to sponsor. It might be something that comes up in the future. This is at the intersection where Calvin Street and Main Street comes out onto Centilia Highway where that second entry of the Best Buy has permanently been locked. It's that set of lights there, goes from one bus stop over to the other side of Route 16. Those crosswalks haven't been working, the light hasn't been working to be able to get pedestrians across from one side to the other. So at the request of some of the residents in the village had requested that we try to get that transformer fixed. I mean, I know that Jim Soper has been working along with Rich Connors on this. So we'll refer it back to sponsor. It might come up in the future if we're not successful getting it done, but I have full faith in both of those gentlemen to be able to get this resolved for the residents.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Item number 27, please. Item 27, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Anthony De Perro that the Department of Planning and Development look into the safety measures that could be implemented and take action in the area between Abbott Ave. and Freeman Ave. as there have been multiple car accidents over the past few months.
Council Perro.
Is there any response received, Mr. Clerk?
Checking right now. There is not, Counselor.
I'd like to postpone until the next meeting and request that a response is issued.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
If I'm planning, you're looking from the response, right? Thank you.
Number 28 is next on the agenda.
Mr. President, item number 28 is a resolution offered by Councilor Rosa de Florio that is on to the mayor, look into the possibility of building a parking garage behind City Hall.
Council de Florio.
I've been fighting for parking garages for the last 14 years, but I'm going to refer this back to sponsor only because of, I see the reviving of Everett Square and I see that there's some parking being added, so I'm going to wait, refer it back to sponsor.
Seconded. Thank you. That was seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Item 31.
31, please.
Mr. President, item 31 is a resolution offered by Councilor Wayne Ametsuski that Massport explained why there was extremely loud plane noise over Everett on June 21st, June 22nd, and June 23rd, 2019.
Council Ametsuski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am happy to report that the noise from planes from Massport has not been too bad since these particular dates, but there is a new director of Massport. I would like this letter, that on these three dates, it was unbearable, and I, you know, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but I did talk to Mr. Sousa from the Citizens Council, Massport, but we just want to let them know, because last, it was last year, two years ago, huh. Anyway, make a long story, you all know my story on the plane noise. We just want them to know that with the city of Everett was impacted, and Mr. Clerk, could you, could we have him send a letter, Mr. President?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to refer this to the city clerk to send this resolution to Massport. Thank you.
Thank you. Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Clerk, when you're ready, we're on number 33.
Item number 33. Mr. President, there's a resolution offered by Councilor Wayne Ametsuski that the Board of Health and the Building Department be notified that there have been complaints of rats in different areas of the city.
Council Ametsuski.
33.
I'll try two. Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if anybody else has received numerous phone calls. Now, I'm going to just mention some streets here today, tonight rather, Bolster Street, Estee Street, George Street, serious issues, Elm Street down the other, after the police station area, Parrish Street, where I actually, in my neighborhood. A woman rang my doorbell the other day, week and a half ago, and she lived on Parrish Street, closer to the Parkway. And I hadn't, I met her a few years ago, but I hadn't seen her in a while, and I said, "Can I help you?" She goes, "Yes, there's a dead rat in front of my house, and a car ran over it, and it's really a sight to see." So I called the city work, City Yard Department, Mr. President, and they came down and removed it. However, you know, this might not seem like an issue that affects everybody, but I can tell you, it's all over the city. I don't know what's happening, but I can say that Mr. Soper from the Building Department is doubling down his efforts. They have done some surveys around George Street, which is really bad. I had a gentleman from that street call me, and I know he called other councilmen here, so I'm not the only, you know, this is not like something I'm putting on the calendar that nobody knows about. And, oh yes, and Council McKinnon has sponsored ordinance that any work being done by utility companies, or a new building, for instance, or a tear down, have to bait their property. I had a little issue, Mr. President, with the Max Discount Building, and I have an issue going now that Mr. Soper is working on, and I may have to put that on the agenda for the next meeting if this man doesn't come to his senses over there. He's not even using a chute, they're throwing stuff out the window, working on Sundays after 6 o'clock. I'm, I have a, you know, sound bothers me, okay? These motorcycles driving. This is right in back of my house, I got 10 houses there, and I thought the guy was going to do the right thing, but he may, and I did call him, I spoke to him briefly. But getting back to the rats and the rodent problem in this city, there has to be an awareness, they do send a neighborhood warning out to various neighborhoods, you've got to put your trash in the barrel and keep it contained. But they're coming from somewhere. Now, they say they're coming from the Parkway, but we're talking Elm Street, down there, almost near the cemetery. Estee Street, where Councilor Marquezey lives. Elsie Street, too. So something's happening with these rats. They're coming out of the manholes and so forth. I have no clue. But the building, Mr. Soper, I have to say, he did send the correspondence, Mr. Clerk.
I'm sorry.
Yes, he did send one. You don't have to read it, but he's going to do an awareness program with the city, I understand, in public, but anybody that has an issue with rodents, call the Code Enforcement Department, let them know where they are, they have done the work, the outreach work as best as they can do, but these utility companies, thanks to Council McKinnon's ordinance, are required to bait these working areas. And then maybe they're slacking off on that, but this poison stuff that works when they, you know, when they put it in there. But something's happening, and to get calls from all various parts of the city is kind of weird. So with that, I'd like to refer this to Mr. Soper for his immediate attention, and I'd like to add just the streets that called me on this. Could I do that, Mr. President?
Yes, you can.
Bolster Street, George Street, Parrish Street, Estee Street, I like that, Elsie Street also, and Elm Street after the police station. Those areas, that's seven calls. So I'd like those streets to be particularly informed of what's going on. Thank you, Mr. President.
Council Palatano.
Thank you. You know, Council Ametsuski hits a good point. You know, the rat problem has been going on for a couple of years now. If you remember, about two years ago, I had animal control up here. This is a result of all of the excessive work that's being done in the city, right? We hold private contractors, their feet to the flame, as far as baiting traps and so forth, but does that happen on streets? Does it happen when they, when they clean a sewer out? No. This is, these are things that are also disrupting these critters. And it is happening all over the city. Some of you know that I'm working now at Home Depot. I can't tell you how many customers have come in and have spoken to from Everett all throughout the summer who are fighting rat and mice problems in neighborhoods that never had these problems before. You know, code enforcement does a good job with a nice flyer, but the flyer just basically says, "Leave your trash in the barrel, make sure your lid's down." You come to my house, I'll show you a city barrel that the rats gnawed through. So, so much for that. If they want it, they'll get at it. I got a hole this big in a trash barrel. So the thing is that, yeah, something more needs to be done. Right now, just sending out a flyer telling people, "Keep your trash in the barrels and lids down," that is not killing rats, it's not reducing the rat problem. They're just going to go someplace else and get food. So we need to do a little bit more than this. I honestly would like to see Mr. Soper come up and give us an explanation of what the city is doing, if it's his responsibility in regard to this problem. Notifying customers that you need to keep your trash in the barrel and the lid down is not the only solution. It doesn't solve the problem. It just pushes the rats someplace else to get. We had a big problem in my neighborhood for two years. This year, we haven't seen any rats. Now we're seeing rabbits. I'd like to see more rabbits. But, you know, two years ago, yeah, I got a neighbor next door that bags them, and he, his body count right now is about 18 rats. You know, I mean, that's not, you know, you can't do it on the deal, on a day-by-day, on a rat-by-rat basis. Something more needs to be done. And the more construction that's going to be happening in the city, the more it's going to drive these rodents into the city. So we're going to have neighborhoods like mine, like George Street, like others, that are not, have never had rodent problems before, and now they're in the house. I've got a three-family house, I've got mice in my house from the streets, I've got a cat on each floor. It's not enough. More needs to be done, and just talking about it isn't solving the problem. This issue about rats has been going on for now, this is the third year, three years we've been talking about this rodent problem. In three years, we still have it, and it's spreading out. It's not going away.
Thank you, Counselor. Council McLaughlin.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. President, if I can just add to Council Ametsuski, a couple of the hills off of Elsie Street. Rosedale and Richdale had contacted me also about same rat issue, so a few of those hills in that area between Mount Washington and Elsie Street, but I do think that it's almost time that you might have to look at a citywide rodent control issue to try to curb it as a whole, because I think there's pockets throughout the whole community that we're seeing this issue at. So, but I just wanted to see if we could mention those streets that had contacted me, some of those hills off of, between those two streets. Rosedale, Richdale, and Maplewood, I apologize, Clerk, if you can.
Thank you, Counselor. Yes. Council Florio, has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you, you know, I work in Boston, and if you go to Boston, you see the big traps, black traps everywhere. So obviously, we're going to have to start doing something like that and everything. So it doesn't matter what, I understand the streets are important, but you have to stop putting traps everywhere, just like in Boston. So, because we're not solving the problem. It is getting worse. So is it the Building Department that will put the traps? Who would take care of that?
I would, from the, from the chair, I'd take the contractor, whoever's doing the work.
No, I think the city needs to put traps besides the contractor. Right now, right now, you have rats running around that are not the contractor's problem. The contractors already built, they already disturbed them, so it's not their problem. So now it becomes a city problem. So it becomes a city problem, the city has to hire someone to put traps throughout the city.
I would say that's a health issue, right?
That's what I, that's what I'm thinking. I don't think it's up to the building inspector. I think it's going to be the Board of Health, just like they will go out and spray for mosquitoes. So I would think you would refer it to the Board of Health to have them do a study into putting in traps. I mean, this is Council Ametsuski's piece, and I definitely don't want to take it away from him. I'm just giving recommendations. I certainly don't want to jump on his piece, I'm just giving recommendation and suggestions that I think that, you know, we should do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think everybody's spoken on it because we've all heard complaints on it, and it is something that is citywide at this point. So whatever we end up doing with this piece, wherever we refer the information to, I do think it's important that we do get some sort of response. I know that Council Palatano would ask for maybe an appearance, but if we could even get something in writing that says how the city proposes to address this going forward, because clearly there's an issue. So anything like that would be helpful.
Thank you. Council Ametsuski.
Thank you. I'm so hap, well, pleased that my colleagues have agreed that there is an issue here. Mr. Soper, Director Soper is in charge of Code Enforcement. This is why we extended it to him. He did send a letter, I'd like you to read it now. I wasn't going to have him do that to delay it, but there is a communication, Mr. Mangan got it, if he's here. You don't have it there? Well, I have it, you know, I'm not a computer expert, but I did actually read the letter from Mr. Soper. Mr. Soper is going to do a citywide program, awareness program, and further the responsibility to these construction sites and so forth. So he's, he's on top of it. You know, it's a phenomenon that's happened seriously in the last couple of weeks. So the Board of Health is fine. Now, the old days, when Mr. Redmond was up here, he was the director, he used to go into the safe, this is a true story. I said, "Mr. Redmond, I got some complaints and, you know, about rats." So he'd come out with these wax things, square wax things, and put them in an envelope. He said, "Don't touch them, whatever you do." But that's the kind of director he was. So I delivered these wax things to people. "Oh, jeez, we haven't seen a rat." And it worked, but I don't know if they can do that anymore. The black traps, Council Marquezey brought to my attention, I think only exterminators can get those, I don't know. But we do have an issue and has to be addressed. Mr. Director Soper is aware of it, and I'd like to refer it to him for his program. He's going to do, they mauled him, by the way, a couple of weeks ago, they did a citywide program about rat and rodent issues. So it is on the table. If you want to invite him here, let's give him a couple of weeks to work on it, and then we'll, I'll reintroduce it after we get some communication, okay?
Do you want to wait for two weeks?
It's, it's.
Refer it to him, that letter that you may have not received, it was on the email that I received.
Probably on my email, sorry. It's not attached.
Like I said, I'm not an expert at email, but I did read it. It was sent to Mr. Mangan, and I wish we had a copy so that would, you members could know what he actually said, but he's on top of it. Thank you, Mr. President. So we refer it to Director Soper.
Went in response.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Item 34. Item 34, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilors Michael McLaughlin, Fred Capone, Richard Delasola Jr., Rosa, and Rosa de Florio. That, the Everett City Council dedicated Veterans Square on the corner of Windsor Street and Bryan Street in honor of former Army veteran Fred Antonelli.
Council McLaughlin.
Mr. President, on the motion, before I speak on it, can I amend it by adding several colleagues of mine who had expressed interest, and I don't want to speak for the body, but I'm not sure if we want to sponsor it as a whole, I'd be happy to do so, but Council Marquezey, Council De Perro, Council Palatano, Council Hanlon.
Welcome to meet.
Okay, is everybody in favor? So Council McKinnon's not here, but I'm sure he's in. Okay, so do the council as a whole. Make a, make a motion that we amend this by adding the entire body to this item.
Seconded, all in favor for that motion?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
And, Mr. President, on the motion, as, as we, many of us know, just several weeks back, we lost a very dear individual in our community, somebody who really contributed a lot to the city of Everett. Fred Antonelli was one of those individuals that many of us had known personally for many years, and we all called a friend. It is, gives me great honor to bring this forward tonight and to ask for support of my colleagues as we just gained, and look forward to doing this in honor of a man who gave so much to our country. 23 years in the service is a long time, it's a career in the service. So I appreciate the support of my colleagues and look forward to, hopefully this happening in the beginning of October, which is, kicks off Italian Heritage Month. I spoke to Commissioner Cristiano, and she thinks we have a date in early October that we're going to be able to do this, which brings together his life, which was a proud Italian American and a veteran. So couldn't think of a better way to honor his life and his sacrifice to our country and to our city. So I want to thank my colleagues for their support and yield to Florida, any of my colleagues that would like to express moments.
Thank you, Counselor. I got Council de Florio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, I echo the comments of Council McLaughlin, but I would also, I don't know if this board would agree, to ask Veterans Commissioner Cristiano to please not do it at 10 and 11 o'clock in the morning while you're working.
Absolutely.
I really, you know.
A Saturday.
Either a Saturday, anytime Saturday, or at evening, even if it's early evening, we can leave work early, but 10 o'clock in the morning, 11 o'clock in the morning, most of us, you know, cannot make it, and this is very important.
I'll put it in the notes.
He's a dear friend of the family, and this is very important to us, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, but it should be a roll call, it's actually no one, another resolution.
Seconded, roll call, please.
Council Capone?
Yes.
Council de Florio?
Yes.
Council Perro?
Yes.
Council Hanlon?
Yes.
Council Marquezey?
Yes.
Council Ametsuski?
Yes.
Council McLaughlin?
Yes.
Council Seminelli?
Yes.
President Delasola?
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero and ees, you have so passed the order to refer this to the Veteran Service Director.
Clerk, can you read number 36 on the agenda?
Okay. Item 36. Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Anthony De Perro that the Traffic Commission consider placing speed bumps in the Housing Authority property on Russell Street at the request of residents in that neighborhood.
Council Perro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know how many of my colleagues have driven Russell Street over the past few years, but it was in such shape that it was impossible to speed. We've all been working collectively over the last few years to get that repaved, and the administration has done so, but now it's caused a little bit of speeding concerns. So at the request of the residents, I'd like to refer this to not only the Traffic Commission, but Transportation as well, have them work collaboratively, get some speed bumps up there, and with the response back in two weeks, please.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. 37, when you're ready, Clerk.
I can only write so fast. Counselor, Mr. President, item number 37 is a resolution offered by Councilor Anthony De Perro, respectfully requesting that the administration appear at the next government operations committee meeting to discuss our public safety facilities and if there is a master plan for a new police station.
Council Perro.
Thank you. Over the summer, as chairs of the Public Safety Committee, I accepted an invitation to tour the police station in the middle of the summer during some of those heat wave issues, and it's no secret, everyone knows what I'm talking about, there are some concerns there, I think we all feel the same way, so I'd request this, get referred to Government Operations without debate, and we can have a full discussion there.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you very much on that one.
Item number 38.
Read number 38, please.
Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Wayne Ametsuski that the sign department place a no trucking sign at the corner of Riviera Beach Parkway and the entrance of second, excuse me, at the entrance to the second half of Lewis Street.
Council Ametsuski.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, the industry in the back Parrish Street has gone down, with the exception of the Anthony Pan Company, and I don't consider a Richie Sledge truck, a trailer truck, anyway. What happens is these produce center trucks come down, I mean, this truck is like a block long, so they get to the end of Lewis Street and try to take a left, and if there's cars parked, even if there's no cars parked there, they go over, they knock down the stop sign, they've knocked down the trees, they've hit cars, they got to back all the way up. Now, I know to put a picture of no trucking in the produce center is the next right, just with the check cashing places. They make this mistake because they're out-of-state truck drivers, and this happens maybe once, twice, or three times a month at least. People gotta get out, move their car, and I have some older neighbors, and it's very difficult. And people gotta direct the guy, he's gotta back up. I mean, these trucks are huge, and they made a mistake by coming down to this particular neighborhood where heavy trucking is really not necessary anymore. So, I'm asking for the picture of the truck. The Sign Division makes some kind of thing to put there that this is not the produce center. You know, really, it's dangerous, number one. If that thing gets stuck on a corner, it's a half an hour deal. If the fire department had to go down or the police, you know, the ambulance and so forth, they could not get to Paris or Bailey Street. For that matter, to anybody that gets -- needs it on the other side of Paris. So, we've gotta have a sign. It doesn't take a state law to pass this, because there's signs that, you know, this is not the area. It's -- one of my neighbors made a homemade sign a few years back and posted it, but didn't last, you know, last a year or so. But anyway, I'd like to refer -- is there a -- right. Council Mike Casey brings up a good point. This is not the produce center. So, who do I send this to? The Sign Division?
With traffic?
Well, I want it on the, you know, where the jewelry store used to be. The opposite corner is the tax place. It should be right there.
Yeah.
That's --
No, this doesn't take an act of Congress. This is a picture of a truck, no trucks. I've seen them in other neighborhoods, they do it, they have the signs. You know, we got the 24/7 no parking casino thing in that neighborhood. I live very close to the casino, and the only problem there, Mr. President, is that people get lost coming down there. They think they can get to the casino. I've seen more license plates from out-of-state than you would imagine. But, you know, it's what -- but that issue's okay. So, I really believe, you know the area very well.
Yes.
Your aunt used to live down on Paris Street, so I'd like to refer this to the Sign Division. You suggest the Traffic Division, too? I don't want this to have to get state approval. This is a city street.
How about we send it to DPW, see what they can do, and if they feel they can't do it?
If you don't mind, who's in charge of the Sign Division? I know that other gentleman.
I won't lie to you, there's a younger gentleman that I'm not very knowledgeable with.
Oh, there's a younger guy here now?
Yeah.
Joe, Joseph.
Something, his name's Joe, I just.
Joe, yeah, nice guy. Okay, so we'll send it to him, maybe he can put a sign up. Thank you. I'm sorry to belabor that. Thank you.
No problem. Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Item --
Thirty-nine, please.
Mr. President, item number thirty-nine is a resolution offered by Council, excuse me, Wayne Ametouski, that the Water Department check for problems with flooding in the baseball field area at Florence Street Park.
Refer to the Water Division of the DPW. Seconded.
Seconded, refer to the Water Division. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Jump down to forty-five, please.
We didn't do forty, right?
Forty, I'm sorry.
Item number forty. Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Council Wayne Ametouski that the Boston Post must be made aware that in certain sections of Everett, that residents are not receiving their mail until after 5:00 p.m., and also some days where they don't receive their mail at all.
Council Matuski?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, you don't appreciate a good mailman until he retires, let me tell you. But this is, you know, you can't do anything with the mail after 5:00 o'clock at night. The banks are closed and so forth. It's an inconvenience. I've gotten calls, I don't know about any else. I am in discussions. I had an issue a few years ago, and I don't want to bring it up with the post office. You know, it's a federal offense, it's an FBI crime. Believe me, what they did to me, you would not believe. And I will, in this particular election, be very, very aware of what's going on. And I am talking to an inspector in Boston on that issue, but I think it's unacceptable to get mail after 5:00, 6:00. 6:00 at night, I mean, come on! And some days, you don't even get mail, and not just where I live. I don't know if anybody else is having this experience. Maybe they're stretching out too many -- they're eliminating a mailman, and they're taking on extra streets. And maybe it's the summer vacations. It could be a million things, but I want to postpone this to our next meeting, because I'm in discussions, as I told Mr. Mangann. I thought he was going to postpone this anyway and told him to put on the next agenda, but briefly, that's what it's all about, and I am in discussions with the inspector in Boston. So, let's lay -- can we postpone this for the next meeting? Thank you.
Seconded, all in favor to postpone this meeting? Ayes have it. Thank you very much.
We're on what, forty-three? Forty-four?
Forty-five.
I have forty-four in front of me without anything. Thank you, sorry. Item number --
Forty-five.
Forty-five. Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Council Fred Capone that is honored the mayor share the departmental evaluations conducted by the organizational assessment personnel with the city council.
Council Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. As we all recall, there was a creation of a whole department because there was a need to do this, so I'm just looking that this body get access to those reports. I'm sure some of that information might be sensitive. If so, we could always go into executive session for that, but I'd like a response from the mayor's office at the next meeting.
Seconded. Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Forty-six, please.
Item forty-six. Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Council Fred Capone that is honored the mayor update the city council as to his plans to acquire a new library director.
Council Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the former library director retired sometime in May, and I know that the assistant city solicitor has been acting in the capacity of interim, but you really can't put together any kind of a long-term plan without having an actual director. So, I'm looking to get a response from the mayor's office in writing for next week, next meeting, in terms of where they're at with that. I'm sure he's doing a fine job, but the reality is, until you get a library director, you can't do an extended plan. You know, so interim can only do so much, and you really need to put a plan together, especially something as sensitive as the library. So, I'm just going to get a response for that in the next meeting.
Seconded, all in favor? All opposed, the ayes have it.
Item number forty-seven.
Number forty-seven, please.
Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Council Fred Capone that the administration consider utilizing reflectors or take some other action to direct more light downward upon the street area coming from the newly installed ornamental streetlights.
Council Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know if anyone else has noticed, they've gotten complaints on it, but although the new lights look very pretty, they're up at the second floor level. So, in terms of the amount of light that's being put down, it's not so great. So, I don't know if there's reflectors or something else that could be used. Mr. Sousa did try to reach me today. We traded phone messages back and forth, but if we could postpone until our next meeting, request something in writing from the department with regards to what can be done. If there isn't anything that can be done, I don't know how much of that $2 million has been expended for the balance of Broadway, but kind of hold out till we can figure out what to do with that.
A brighter bulb, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know if reflectors will help illuminate the road a little bit better, because right now, it's not doing a great job.
I got one in front of my house, it's.
Yeah, they're pretty, but they're just not illuminating. If you're a bird, you know exactly where you're going, but, you know, down to the ground level, you're not able to tell where you gotta go, so.
Council Mike Casey?
Actually, I've had complaints even on the new lights that are installed in neighborhoods, well, they're bright up top, and then when it reaches the bar, the new new lights aren't that.
That's what I hear.
Yeah. People complain that the streets are still dark.
Yep.
You know? I mean, it'd be nice in Wellesley, but, you know. Thank you.
Is the motion wanted for next meeting?
Yeah, postpone it, refer it to Community Development, ask for a response at the next meeting.
And also if you include something that on all the lights, period.
All the new lights.
Only on the ornamental. Yep.
Have a second on that?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
The forty-eight.
Number forty-eight, please.
Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Council Wayne Ametouski that the city take immediate action on Paris Street due to unsafe conditions on the street at the request of residents in that area.
Council Matuski?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I had some company this past Saturday, and there's a parking area on Paris Street, and the people that visited me, they were guests at my home, visiting my mother, nurses and so forth. The street is a complete war zone, porthole-filled disaster. And I know that people are waiting for redevelopment, you know, but you gotta put -- now, they did Second Street over, as you know, their market. That's beautiful. They did it in two days. I can't believe how great job, and Second Street also. But Paris Street is no man's land. Those businesses pay taxes. There's only one way into that particular neighborhood. Nobody that lives there uses that other way to go out, because you rip -- you need a rim job and everything else. Well, you've been down in the neighborhood. Needless to say, there's been numerous flat tires that, thank God, there's a tire company around the corner. Two tire companies, but, I mean, come on.
Plus a tow company.
You know, and I'm afraid to drive by there, because these business people weighing, it's a porthole the size of a foxhole here. Well, you can't go fast, otherwise you're really in trouble, but needless to say, let's put an effort, you know, don't just fill in a couple of portholes and call it a day. You know, let's put some effort down there. You know, something's gonna happen to my -- the old Mike's Discount Building, because, believe me, I hear it all day long now. And the Dampney Pan Company is a respectable business. You've got Richie Slush, who is really doing well, and there's a few other shops there. But I want to refer this to Mr. St. Louis, see if he can clean that area up a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Seconded. Hold on. Yes, Mr. St. Louis, look into the portholes. Thank you. That was seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Number forty-nine, please.
Excuse me. Item number forty-nine. Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilors Michael McLaughlin and Fred Capone that the DPW director appear at the next council meeting to give an update on the replacement schedule for damage and missing fire hydrant markers.
Council McLaughlin, I'm sorry. Yes, Council McLaughlin?
Mr. President, thank you. Mr. President, as I, most people know, I go running every day, and I've noticed so many of these fire hydrant markers. They're broken in half, there's points sticking out, you know, they're broken in halves, and now there's a point, it becomes a point, and there's ones that are totally missing. They're all in disarray, and I know that the wintertime is coming up, and I think that it's, that we should look at it as a citywide issue and try to identify all of them that are broken, because I think they're really important come wintertime, when you have snow piled up, you know, God forbid of a fire emergency. But I think there's more than just one neighborhood that needs to be reviewed on these, and so I think that if we looked at them citywide, I think the time to do it is now, before, obviously, the snow comes, and that's why I asked for citywide, because I don't think you can isolate this to one neighborhood. I think it's across the city, the condition that they're in, they're really in poor condition. I think it's just a matter of, over the years, they get broken, you, a few here and there, and nothing anybody can do about it, but I think you have to revisit it as a whole issue. Thank you.
Council Capone, do you want to speak on that? Council McLaughlin, mayor from the chair. Counselor?
I think, and Council Mike Casey brought this up, it was a couple of years ago, and what's happened, the kids are going by and snapping them and actually hurting themselves. I think there's another design that goes on the caps, like a metal that comes up, it's only like a couple of feet high, not real high, like we have a blizzard every time. You may want to look into that. We can look at a different design. I think if we replace him, it's gonna happen again. Someone's gonna get hurt. It's like a sword, like a whip.
Mr. President, what?
Right.
Mr. President, I'm okay with that idea, but I think we need to do something with the ones that are currently broken and a danger to the neighborhood. So, I'm okay with looking at a different method and seeing if there's some other option out there that's more sturdier and better, long-lasting. But there is many of them across the city that are broken and in disarray and need to be addressed immediately, because they are a danger to.
So, what's your favor on this piece?
So, I would like to ask Mr. St. Louis for a response back in two weeks on a game plan of how to rectify this issue citywide. I don't know where he starts or how he's able to address it, but I think, and it might be just to remove them all and then figure out the next plan and figure out the next thing, but go out and remove them all, and that might be the solution temporarily. But I'd like to get an answer in two weeks on this.
Thank you. Seconded, all in favor? All opposed, the ayes have it? Yes. If I'm correct, number fifty-two on the agenda.
Excuse me. Item number fifty-two. Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Council Michael J. McLaughlin that the city engineer appears at the next Government Operations Committee meeting to discuss property damage at 118 Elm Street due to tree roots from the city pushing into his property.
Council McLaughlin?
Mr. President, thank you. So, we all know along Elm Street, there's the nice EHS Crimson Tide display of shrubs on the hill, the side of the hill. Towards the corner, if you're looking at the hill, towards the corner on the right-hand side, there's about a three or four-foot stump, and it's a very large stump that's sticking out of the ground. Must have been a huge tree at one point that was there that was cut down. The stump has been left there. The roots of that stump has caused major damage to not only the city's wall, the retaining wall that's along Elm Street, it's also gone underneath the fence, lifted the fence, and it's gone on to the other property, and it's pushed their wall over, and now their wall has completely fallen because of the tree roots. I think this is something that needs to be coordinated between the schools and the city if they own that land, so I'd refer this to one month, give Greg St. Louis a month to be able to figure out how to remove that tree stump. And I think you know the tree stump.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
You and I were approached about it together, Counselor. So, I think in a month from now, hopefully, he can come back with an answer. I don't actually know if you want to sponsor this.
Okay. I'll go on the piece also.
Yeah, so, actually, I apologize, Counsel. I forgot to do that. I apologize. I make a motion that we amend item number fifty-two by adding Council Delasola's name to this piece.
All in favor?
Aye. And ask that Mr. St. Louis.
The ayes have it. Thank you.
Ask that Mr. St. Louis come back in one month with a response on how to remove the tree stump that's there and how to resolve the property damage that has been caused because of the tree root.
Okay. As amended, all in favor? All opposed, the ayes have it?
Item number fifty-three. Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Council Wayne Ametouski and Council Stevenson Eli that the city council support the recommendation of David School Finance Task Force and change the charter to make the mayor voting member of the school committee.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Council Matuski?
As we all know, our last meeting here was with the Everett School Finance Task Force. They had suggested that the mayor be a voting member of the school committee. So, Councilman Siminelli and I, I'd also like to add Council Mike Casey to this piece, if anybody else is interested. Council DePiero and Hanlon would like to be added. Hanlon, Councilman Hanlon, DePiero, and Mike Casey. Oh, Councilwoman DeFlorio. So, oh, the whole, is it the, no, with the exception of Council Capone and Napolitano. Okay, that's fine.
Yes.
We need eight votes for this to pass, at any rate, but, you know, we were at this, this task force did a pretty good job, you know? I've never seen a blue commission task force by such educated people. Oh, Counselwoman DeFlorio. So, oh, the whole, is it the, no? With the exception of Counselor Capone. And Napolitano. Okay, that's fine.
Yes.
We need a vote for this to pass, at any rate. But, you know, we were at this, this task force did a pretty good job, you know? I've never seen a blue commission task force buy such educated people. We're talking presidents of banks, I don't know where the mayor found these people, but it was the most, it was a good breath of fresh air. And to find out that out of ten members, is it ten members on the school committee? Nine members. Almost seven members have, you know, and I'm not picking on family members here. I brought it up on this council regarding something else. But seven members out of nine, I don't know what two-thirds is here, but have close relatives working for the school department. I have no problem with that, but, you know, there's a conflict, and they said that, not me. This is the task force saying that. You know, this has to be addressed at some point. You know, and I thought these gentlemen were very, very good, and they recommended that the mayor be a voting member of the school committee, whoever that mayor may be. And, you know, and I think it's the right thing, I really do. And my colleagues that are supporting me on this this evening, and the city clerk is putting the paperwork together, is that...
I drafted a template of what it could look like.
So what do you recommend we do with this? Postpone it for the next meeting, and then you're gonna fine-tune it?
Since it was introduced as a resolution, I would refer it to me to draft.
Okay.
And then we will resubmit a order. Does that make sense to you?
That makes sense.
So if you do that, and then...
Okay, that makes sense. But, Mr. President, you were here for the special meeting with the finance committee, and I noticed one or two school committee members laughing at me and my comments. And you, as president, have to make sure we have decorum here. I'm not up here to belap that. And I didn't appreciate that. It's not your fault, you may not have noticed it, but I notice it. And I don't like it, it's disrespectful. And I pick up on it, I'm gonna say something about it. But I also have here, I just want to read one sentence. "A petition for the adoption or revision of a charter shall be signed by at least 15% of the number of legal voters residing in such a city at the preceding state election." In other words, you know the thing about the ward representation, the ordinance? And I discussed this with a few of my colleagues. It needs around 600 signatures, which is very doable. I got over 1,000 just for the council raise myself, with a little bit of help. And I know that Counselor McCasey's very good at that department. So if, if that's the case, we could put, and I talked to the city solicitor also, 650 signatures is not a big number to me. And it's not a lot of work to me, because people that I talk to want exclusive ward representation. And that goes for the school committee, too. And I'm not knocking the school committee, you know, things are gonna change up there now. New, new people, administrators and so forth. And this is just a little bizarre to me, and let me put it that way. I never knew that seven out of nine had employees working, I mean, come on! This isn't an employment agency for elected officials. And I respect people for where they work, and their families and all that. And I'm not saying it, but you have to declare that it's a potential conflict of interest, or an appearance of a con, that's it. An appearance of it, you have to declare that on any vote that you take. But anyway, this task force touched on that. So let's, let's get real up here. If we're gonna do something and, you know, freshen the ear a little bit, let's do it right. And I have no, no squams at the school committee, because I'm not an expert in that department. But I wanted to let people know that 600 signatures is not a lot to turn the charter around to make a district representation. And that's what I plan on doing. So whether it's a home rule petition, or a signature, and I'm gonna have some help, by the way. Believe me, there's a lot of people that want to see real, true democratic district representation for the districts that you live in. If that's the case, you know, just touching on that other piece, Mr. President, we all should just run citywide, you're all councilmen at large. Nobody's, you know, let's do this right. But with that, I'd like to refer this to the city clerk to fine-tune this ordinance. And I want to thank, did you get the members that wanted to sign on? With the exception of Counselor McGlaughlin and Napolitano...
Yes, sir.
And I didn't get the president.
I haven't been asked.
Would you like to be, everybody else here is, wants the mayor to be a voting member of the school committee?
Excuse me?
Would you like to be on it? Everybody else, with the exception of those two gentlemen I just mentioned, is, that's up to you.
I'll get back to you.
Well, we're passing it right now.
Uh, no.
This is, okay, three noes, everybody else. And Counselor McKinnon's not here, so. So we got eight members that are in favor of it.
Now, are you talking the ward, or are you talking the school?
No, no, this is for the mayor to be a, a voting member of the school committee.
Yes, I do.
Oh, okay, so it's...
Yes, I thought you were...
No, I'm sorry, I threw the other measure in only, the only reason why I did that, Mr. President, is because, excuse me? Yeah, the only, Counselor McCasey brings up a very good point. He said to call for the question and ask the end.
No, Counselor McGlaughlin, you had the floor. No, he's got, he's got 45 seconds.
I had 45 seconds left. He times me, believe me, and I time myself.
Okay, I have Counselor Napolitano.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Counselor Ametouski for inviting me on it. But I just want to explain my reasons for not joining on board, is that, you know, having worked very carefully with Mass. Journalists and with charter review, I honestly do not believe this can be changed without a full-blown charter review. I'll make pass my vote if you're able to get it to that point at that time, but at this point, I just can't support this. I have no problem with the mayor being a voting member, I just don't believe this is the right, the correct process. So I just want to explain why my reasons for not being involved in it, it's not because I don't believe that it's the way to go, I just don't think this is the right process. Thank you.
Thank you.
On a point of personal privilege, the reason why I'm not supporting it, and with all due respect to my colleagues, the commission did a great job, but their recommendation was not that the mayor become a voting member. It was that he would become a voting member if the school department did not implement their findings and what they had said to do, or if we continue to find ourselves in the problem. They did acknowledge that other cities do have a mayor as a voting member, but they said at this present time, we're not making that recommendation, but it's out there for down the road if this doesn't work. So it's inaccurate, and that's why I'm not supporting it.
Thank you.
Maybe I, Mr. President, just in closing thought, because the councilman just questioned...
Counselor Napolitano called for the question.
Well, no, I called for the question, he actually did.
Well, he didn't have the floor.
But he just made an incorrect statement. The task force did ask...
Excuse me, Counselor.
Point of personal privilege, then, how's that sound? The task force did ask and recommend that the mayor be a voting member, they said 20 other communities. Mr. Capone, I have good hearing.
I asked a question, you're right.
No, 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 I know what the commission report says, it's in there.
Counselor, no cross to the...
It's in there, you know it is.
All right, the question, they called for the question, let's roll call vote, please.
So, it's, it's, it's a, but I just want to know, what is it?
Counselors, we got two more pieces.
I just want, I want to read what you're voting, so you know, even though it's a resolution.
Thank you.
It's, we amended this to add the majority of the city council, excluding a few, two members, to send this to the city clerk to draft the legislation to put forth as an order. That's, as amended. I just, I want so you know what you're voting on, because there was a lot of discussion in the middle. So, it's a, it's a voice vote, as amended, Mr. President.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay. I think we have one left.
We have our last piece, fifty-six.
Fifty-six.
On the agenda.
Item fifty-six. Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor Anthony DePiero that the Everett City Council hereby approves a veteran service, excuse me, a veteran square dedication for Enrico Miranda on the corner of Widia Drive and Parkter Ave. Please note, it says resolution, but it has, was drafted as an order, just mistakenly as a resolution.
So change, so make a motion to change it to order?
As we did, as we did on the other...
I would, Mr. President...
Counselor DePiero.
If it's all right with my colleagues, I'd like to first amend the piece by adding the entire body, if there's no objection.
No objection.
Counselors, we're almost there.
Is there any objection by adding the entire body?
No objection.
All right, do you want to take a vote on the amendment first, Mr. President?
Yes, there would be two amendments, and I feel like you could vote on them at the same time. It's to amend it, to make it an order instead of a resolution, and to add the entire city council.
So moved.
All in favor?
You're voting individually?
All opposed, the ayes have it.
And on the piece, on the piece, Mr. President, Sergeant Miranda served this country and community with pride and distinction during World War II. At the time of his discharge on April 20th, 1946, he held the rank of sergeant and was the recipient of the World War II Victory Medal, the Good Conduct Medal, the Army Occupation Medal, Germany, and the European, African, Middle Eastern Theda Campaign ribbon. I don't think there's much more accolades one could get during their time in service, so I would ask for favorable passage.
Seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McCasey.
Yes.
Counselor Ametouski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Siminelli.
Yes.
And President Delasola.
Yes.
Ten yes, zero nays, you have passed the last order of the evening.
Before, before we adjourn, Counselor Floyd wants to say something for the chair.
I just want everybody to know that on September 17th, there's a primary in the city of Everett for council at large. I wish everybody luck, and please get out to vote. Thank you.
And one more note, I want to wish John Burley happy birthday today.
Happy birthday.
He's all back. And we have a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
So moved.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.